Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Agora Hills City Council meeting. Please silence all cell phones and other electronic devices. If you wish to speak or submit a written comment, please complete a comment card for each item and submit to the city clerk, Ms. Rodriguez, prior to the public comment portion of the item. I will now call this meeting to order. Before we start this evening, I would like to acknowledge the many agencies, groups, and businesses that assisted our community during the recent fires. Los Angeles Fire Department Station 89, including all our neighboring city, county, and state firefighters; Lost Hills Sheriff's Station, including all our sheriff, police, and CHP personnel; the Agora Hills Library, who made charging stations and Wi-Fi available to the public; our Community Emergency Response Team, CERT, who will be having a new training session next month; our city staff, Communications Streets, Charge Stations, Wi-Fi, opening the Emergency Operations Center; the Arson Watch Group; the Agora Hills Fire Safe Council; shelters for evacuees, such as the Calvary Church in Westlake Village and El Camino Real Charter High School in Woodin Hills; shelters for small animals, such as the Agora Animal Care Center and El Camino Real Charter High School; shelters for large animals, such as Pierce College and Burbank L.A. Equestrian Center; the businesses that offered free meals, such as El Pollo Loco in Agora Hills and the World Central Kitchen at Malibu Brewing Company in Malibu; and the businesses that created L.A. Fire Relief Donation Drives, such as Hardcore Fitness in Agora Hills and Proactive Sports Performance in Westlake Village. I would just like to say a heartfelt thank you to all who contributed to not only our community, but our neighboring communities during the high winds and the surrounding area brush fires. We continue to offer our support to all who were affected by the fires. Thank you. And now I'm going to move on to the land acknowledgement. The city of Agora Hills acknowledges that we occupy land originally and still inhabited and care for by the Chumash Nation. Descendants of Chumash still remain, and we honor and pay our respects to their elders and various groups that make up the past, present, and emerging as they continue their stewardship of our lands and waters. We have a responsibility and a commitment to elevate the stories, culture, and community of the original inhabitants of the city of Agora Hills, and we are grateful to have the opportunity to live and work on these ancestral lands. And I would now defer to Cub Scout PAC 227 for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Attention. Will the audience please rise? Color guard advance. Hand salute. For those not in uniform, please put your right hand over your heart. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Color guard, post the colors. Color guard salute. Two. Color guard dismissed. The audience may be seated.
Thank you so much to Cub Scout PAC 227. I will now defer to our clerk for the roll call.
Thank you. Good evening. Councilmember Anderson?
Present.
Councilmember Anstead?
Here.
Councilmember Klein Lopez?
Here.
Mayor Potem Wolf?
Present.
Mayor Sylvester?
Here.
Mayor Sylvester, you have a quorum.
Thank you. No closed session was held this evening. We will now make a motion to approve the agenda. Will the maker of the motion and the second to approve the agenda as amended state your names.
City Councilman Chris Anstead, I make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I'll second. Deborah Klein Lopez?
May we have a roll call?
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Anstead?
Aye.
Councilmember Klein Lopez?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Wolf?
Aye.
Mayor Sylvester?
Aye.
Mayor Sylvester, you have approval, five to zero.
Thank you. Now we're going to have our Business of the Month presentation. Here we go. Thank you. My first time. All right. So I'd like to call up Jennifer LaSalle. I'm thrilled to announce our first Business of the Month honoree, Hardcore Fitness in Agora Hills. This incredible gym is dedicated to improving the health and wellness of our community, inspiring members to achieve their fitness goals while fostering a sense of connection and support. During the recent fires, Hardcore Fitness went above and beyond. They not only continued operations, but organized a large-scale donation drive that brought together over 400 volunteers and tens of thousands of donations in just two days. Partnering with the Los Angeles Unified School District, they transported these donations to students and families impacted by the fires, demonstrating the true meaning of community. Donations were also made to local animal shelters and directly to families impacted by the fires. Thank you, Jennifer, and the Hardcore Fitness team for your generosity and dedication. You've made a remarkable impact, and we're proud to honor you as our first Business of the Month for 2025. Would you like to say a few words?
Yes, thank you so much. I think we've just been moving at such a fast pace, and I definitely want to thank this incredible team of Hardcore Fitness members and my incredible husband back there. This could definitely not have happened. This was a far bigger endeavor than we had anticipated, and we haven't had a chance to breathe. Even until now, I think that the initial efforts proved to be just so encouraging to our hearts, our souls, our communities as a whole, watching everybody come together in the way that they did. And now, just watching the selflessness of these communities and this family in front of me here shuttle and take big trucks and loads, and their backs probably ache beyond belief. But I'll tell you what, just what I feel COVID did to separate and isolate people, I feel like this tragedy is really bringing things and people and communities together again, and it's a beautiful thing to watch. So it's an absolute privilege. So thank you for just your full support, because many of you made it out to volunteer and help and are still even flooding our lines to help. So from the bottom of my heart, and I know I speak for my extended family over here, my fit fam, we are truly grateful and honored just to be a part of this incredible community of Agora Hills. So thank you very much.
And before we move on, I forgot to mention I'd also like to send out our thoughts to all the people that are currently in the path of the new fire that's burning out. I don't even know the name of it yet. The Hughes Fire. I know I have family in Ojai, and they're very nervous tonight. All right. So now, Intergovernmental Special Purpose Committee and Departmental Reports. We have Southern California Edison. We're going to have just tonight, we're only having an LED street light replacement effort report from John King. This has got nothing to do with all the other issues with SEC, so we're only focusing tonight on the LED street light replacement. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, City Council, Mr. City Manager, Madam City Attorney. I bring greetings to you, first off, from my city. I am the mayor of Covina. So I am pleased to be here with you all tonight, wearing my Southern California Edison hat, of course, but I always want to bring greetings from my community. It's good to talk with you all tonight as we've been moving through this process for quite some time. Charmaine and your team have been fantastic to work with, of course. And we want to just talk a little bit about the process now that we're heading into, or hope to head into, I should say, around replacing the streetlights in your community with new LED technology. So if we can go to the next slide. I always intersperse a couple of pictures from communities where we have recently changed out the streetlights. This happens to be in Costa Mesa and in a business area. So this is a good example of what the post look ends up looking like with the new LED streetlights. For reference, these are 3,000 K or Kelvin temperature streetlights, so somewhere right in the middle of the color temperature spectrum that we offer. But a good example of what the LED streetlights end up looking like. It tends to be a very even streetlight surface. The lighting is much more rectangular, and of course, these lights are Dark Sky compliant, so they place all the light on the street as opposed to kind of sending it everywhere in an effort to get enough light to the street surface. So we've really found now, after roughly 370,000 lights that we've installed across the territory, we're at the final turn, if you will. We're heading towards the end of the program. So this has really been a great effort. Next slide, please. So Option E, quite simply, is the program that allows Southern California Edison to come into your community and replace the streetlights that we own and operate in your city. We would never, obviously, change them out without your authorization unless it's for repair or maintenance, where we're just doing typical replacements. But in this case, we would sweep through the community and replace all of the streetlights that are under account to the city of Agora Hills. That's a small number, 21 total. But there are also a number of lights in your community that are under account to the county of Los Angeles. And there are 1,972 lights under account to the county itself. So in a lighting district that probably historically predated the annexation, or the incorporation, rather, of your community. We have, as I mentioned, we have been working through our territory replacing lights, quite literally, from Visalia to Laguna de Guelle, from Blythe to Santa Barbara. So it has spanned our entire service territory, and we've had great success with the lights we use. We have landed on the GE Profile Lights. As I mentioned, they are tremendously efficient. They have been really robust in a variety of geographic and climatic locations for us. We have everything from lights in Mammoth and the eastern Sierras all the way down to Barstow, where it'll be 130 degrees at times, or outside of Death Valley. So they have been very robust and have worked really well. I did mention already that these lights are Dark Sky compliant. They are certified by the Dark Sky Association and by the International Illumination Engineering Society. So we've had really good success with these. Very few complaints, quite honestly. When they are deployed, there are, in any community, I can't say that there are no complaints, because in every community, there's certainly somebody that says, "I just don't like those lights," right? There is a change, and it's something different. But we have had great success with these. And quite honestly, in several communities where I expected a lot of complaints, we got very, very few complaints. So it's been an interesting deployment. I always point out Balboa Island as probably my worst fear, because the streetlights are right at the second-story level with a lot of houses in alleys very close by. It's a tremendous opportunity for a lot of light trespass, and we got no complaints from the island, which I was both surprised and delighted by. So it was kind of an interesting outlook. Some places where I didn't expect to get complaints, we got more complaints. So you just never know. But quite honestly, it's worked out very well. And even in the cities where we've had a couple of complaints, usually a shield will help take care of that. So it's been very successful. As noted here, the lights provide a much better light quality. So light quality is measured through a number of metrics, but one of the primary ones is called Color Rendering Index. And what that simply means is our ability to see beneath these lights is vastly improved, because the color rendering, the ability to see color and detail under these lights, is much better. So the nighttime environment is much safer. It gives you a much clearer picture at night as opposed to the old high-pressure sodium lights. These lights, on the scale of 100, these lights land somewhere between 85 and 90, depending upon the color temperature. The old high-pressure sodium lights were more in the 50, 48 to 52 range. So they are a vast improvement in terms of the night vision and the safety aspect of them as well. It goes without saying that they're very energy efficient. So a typical 100-watt streetlight that's in residential areas today goes down to roughly 30, or goes to 37 watts, as an example. So they save a tremendous amount of energy and, of course, cost for you as our customer. Let's go ahead and go to the next slide. This is a simple picture of what one looks like. This is in the city of Glendora. We deployed in Glendora roughly 16 months ago, give or take. They utilized 3,000 K as their color temperature, but all of the actual Cobra, Cobra Head-style lights look essentially the same, unless they're a much larger wattage. So all the residential lights look just like this. They mimic pretty well the older-style Cobra headlights that are in place today. So most folks don't even notice the look of them being different unless they happen to notice the light differences. Let's go ahead to the next slide. So color temperature is an important conversation, and we have provided, I've worked with Charmaine to provide some examples within your community where there are a few lights that have been changed out because of car hit-pull or some failures. Those are actually in the county area, or, I'm sorry, in the areas that the county has the account, but within your city boundaries. We have replaced those with 2,700 K, so the warmest color temperature that we offer. We offer 2,700 K, 3,000, and 4,000. As you go up in the number, it tends to be whiter-looking. So we really only find communities using the 4,000 for traffic safety lights, oftentimes at intersections or arterials. Sometimes a city will use the 4,000 on major arterials or thoroughfares. But by far and large, we're finding that most communities use either the 2,700 or the 3,000 across their entire community. It presents a much nicer, much warmer nighttime picture. The 2,700 has been very, very successful, and the county is using that exclusively. So we deployed that in Altadena, in many hillside communities, Arcadia and so forth. So they've been very, very successful across our territory. We, L.A. County, as I said, has adopted the 2,700 K as their standard for any county area or any county account. They will defer to the city. So if you said, "No, we really want 3,000 K," they would defer to that. But in just about any circumstance, we tend to go with the 2,700 K anywhere the county is involved, and that works out really well.
Before we move on to the next slide, sorry. Can I just ask a question? Because I can't see from here. Which one is the 2,700?
So as you go further, further to the left, I believe the very furthest one would be much like the high-pressure sodium lights of today, and the next one over would be 2,700.
2,700, okay. Thank you very much.
This is a, so this is a major thoroughfare that was done in 3,000 K in Orange County. I just, I always want to make sure to show this shot, because this gives you a good contrast. If you notice at the intersection, the city had utilized the 4,000 K lights that I mentioned for the traffic safety lights. So that gives you a good contrast between the 4,000 K lights and the 3,000 K lights that we utilize more predominantly. This also gives you a really good picture of where the cutoffs are. So I mentioned that the lights really do a good job of placing, the fixtures do a good job of placing the light where it's supposed to go. This gives you a good indication. You can see that the lines are pretty distinct. On either side of the street, there's not a lot of backwash out beyond the street and so forth. They're typically designed to go- designed to go six to eight feet beyond the curb line, so a sidewalk width and a little more beyond the curb line. So just a good example of how the lights actually perform. So this is, this is your savings outlook, and I, I can honestly say typically, you know, you all have 21 streetlights, so the savings is, is relatively small, it isn't the largest driver, of course, for, for the project, but in your case, you would be saving just under $1,800 a year in terms of your streetlight, your actual streetlight bill. There is a, I always speak about the recovery mechanism that's included in the tariff. It's not a separate bill, it's not a separate line item, there's no interest associated with it, it's just simply a recovery mechanism that collects back the initial cost of installation and, and materials, so about $300, $325 per light, depending upon the wattage, sorry, a little more, a little less depending upon the wattage. That lasts for 20 years in the background, and once that falls away, your savings would go to $2,225 annually. So it, again, the, the savings in your case is not the major driver for the project, it's more about having a, a common look across the community and sweeping through and doing the lights all at one time as opposed to having a hodgepodge approach of, of doing one anytime there's a failure or replacing upon a car hit pole or something like that. As I mentioned, the county has 1,972 lights, so their savings are more substantial, and that would accrue to the actual district where, where folks pay into for the, the county to administer that, that lighting district. And I, to be honest, I don't know if you all contract with the county to do that, or if it's part of the property tax bill, in most cases, it's part of the property tax bill, so I, I just don't know what the specific arrangement is in your community. So next steps, quite simply, I, I believe that we, as I mentioned, we've, we've worked with Charmaine to identify some lights that your Public Works Subcommittee can go out and take a look at, any of you can go out and take a look at if you'd like, and Charmaine can share, share those with you, of course. And then our anticipation is, assuming that you all feel comfortable with this, that we would come back in February and seek authorization of the, of the contract document, which is quite literally a two-page contract that authorizes us to move forward and change the lights. So with that, please, any questions and anything that I can answer for you?
Thank you. Can we get a copy of this PowerPoint presentation?
Of course.
Because I, do you, do you have one? All right, so you can send it to the council, thank you very much. Okay, did any council members have any questions? Councilmember Klein Lopez?
Thank you. It might be more of a question for staff, but I have a few questions. Can you, can you clarify again, first of all, thank you for coming?
Of course.
As a fellow elected, you all wear a bunch of different hats. Can you clarify again, even in round numbers, how many lights SCE takes care of, how many we do and how many the county does?
Sure, absolutely. So I'm, I like to say I'm the proud owner of a half a million streetlights, so we, we, we have in, in my...
No, I mean just in Agoura Hills.
Yeah, so 480-ish thousand lights that we actually own, operate, maintain, take care of, including the 21 and 1,900 in New York community, and again, those are spread all across our territory, our 50,000 square miles, but largely located, of course, in the, in the Southern California area. And you asked about the county of Los Angeles?
Well, I mean, part of my question is, and maybe Charmaine or our city manager can answer this, so we've swapped out some lights on Agoura Road and on the Reyes Adobe, over, overpass, who, whose lights are those?
Councilmember Klein Lopez, we, on Agoura Road, we own 94 lights west of Canaan and then another 32 light poles east of Canaan. We also include the lights that are on Reyes Adobe, forgive me, I think there's eight of them.
So when we swapped out the lights, those were our?
Yes, they were.
Lights and poles? Okay, even on the overpass?
The ones on Agoura Road.
On the overpass too, on Reyes Adobe?
Not on the overpass itself, we, those are Caltrans.
So we work...
We do, we do, I think, on, it's not uniform yet, but on some of the overpasses, we do maintain those lights, do pick...
Maybe it was, we, we swapped out the, I think we swapped out the equipment, the head, right?
We, we did, we, we swapped out the heads on the poles, correct, on Reyes Adobe.
Right, 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 okay, and so, so my question then is, when, when you swap out your lights, for them to either match or, or, you know, blend with ours, do you decide? Do you decide? Does L U E D C decide? Does the council decide? How does, how does that work? I, I ask because...
Of course.
In the spirit of our former mayor, Elise Buckley-Weber, lighting is very important, so look at me, I'm channeling Elise right now, how does it work so that we are consistent across the city with the patchwork?
So we, what we typically do, of course, is work with the community, you decide the color temperature, right? So we would work with you, your staff, to decide the color temperature, and ultimately, you all make that decision, I assume. So that would be, let's assume for the moment, you choose 2,700, we would use that across the, the community, both on the county lights and on the city lights, assuming you didn't ask for something different. In terms of the wattages, we typically use the standardized wattage ratio that both GE and the Illumination Engineering Society have developed, so as I mentioned, a, a typical 100 watt light that's in the field today transitions to a 37 watt LED.
So, but my question then, and maybe it's for staff, what internally, how do we land on the specific color? Do, does it go to committee or does it stay?
The next step after this is we plan to take this item to the Public Works Subcommittee that is scheduled for the 4th of February.
Public Works?
Yeah. Their comments, their recommendations, and then we would bring it back to council. We're looking at doing it in the end of February.
Okay, so it comes to council, so I would just ask staff that when this happens, if we can include the very, very detailed hard work that the Land Use Economic Development Committee put in for the sign ordinance that had a lot of light research and investment, you know, we, we bought, you know, the, what do you call it, the laser, we called her Lu, Lu Lu Lumen, I think we called her.
Light meters, yes.
Yeah, so, you know, we put a lot of time and effort into lighting and color and temperature and brightness and all of that as part of the sign ordinance, so I just would ask staff that if it doesn't come to that committee, if it stays in Public Works, that you kind of incorporate that, obviously.
If I, if I could, that, that was our goal, and that's why we're, we're probably taking an extra step of doing the presentation tonight, so everybody can see it, and then really have a discussion and make sure we match the lighting up, so that was our goal.
And if I may also, and just for kind of expectation management, obviously, signs would be typically are a different color temperature, they would be more of the 4,000 K on...
Right.
Typically, in order to make them more visible and so forth. So the streetlights are a little bit different animal, so I just, you know, in the interest of no surprises.
Right, right, right. Okay, and then, those are my only questions, I do have a statement at the end that I'd like to say.
Thank you, and I just have one more question. So you were saying that it has better vision at night?
Yes, ma'am.
So does this mean that our Ring cameras will be more efficient in recording?
Interestingly, so I'll give the example of the West Los Angeles Federal Building. We have the streets right around the West LA Federal Building, and the VA Hospital, and some of those facilities, and I worked with the Homeland Security folks when we did that installation to make sure, one, because it's a sensitive area and we needed to make sure everybody was aware, but the comment that I received back is that they felt like they got a new video camera system because their cameras actually worked, saw, much as our eyes do, so much better underneath these lights. So it was an interesting kind of testimonial without, you know, intending to, to find one. Your Ring camera on your front door, I'm not sure that it will reach, you know, per se, and have that same kind of effect, but certainly, if you have license plate reading cameras or any of the kinds of technology that's out in the community, certainly those will be impacted positively.
Because a lot of people have them mounted above their garage doors, so it's looking like we do look straight onto the street corner, so it could be a security enhancement.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
All right, if nobody else has anything, I'm going to defer to City Councilwoman Klein Lopez's statement.
Any other questions?
I just want to make sure all statements tonight are just about the lighting tonight, correct? That's what we said to the public, and that's what we're...
No, my statements about SCE in general, and I, I checked it with the city manager. It's not, we're not discussing it, I'm just making a statement because there was someone else that was supposed to be here tonight.
And if I may, oh, I apologize, I, that, so I, I wanted to make sure, I should have done this right at the get-go, so both Rebecca, who is your local Public Affairs Manager, and her boss, Josh Torres, were both intending to be here this evening. With the breakout of the fire today, they actually both were activated, well Rebecca's been activated almost non-stop for the last several weeks, so I, I came on my own. They, they would typically be here to, to not only answer your questions, but greet you and, and have any conversation that you want to have, of course, but, so I apologize that they weren't able to join me this evening. Should have done that right from the start, but please.
Thank you, and, and just to, to clarify, that is not actually the reason that Rebecca gave to our city manager or that Josh gave to me today. They said that they came because they didn't feel safe, which, I mean, I think if you look around, we're a pretty, you know, a calm group.
I'm glad.
And, you know, I just wanted to say publicly that, you know, we are up here, you're also an elected, people yell at you and get mad at you all the time, and you still show up.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, and you take the questions and feedback and comments of the people you serve, and I just wanted to say I'm very, very disappointed that they did not have the courage to do that. I understand that you, you know, are not a public affairs person, and so, you know, we're not going to ask you any questions about the latest power shut offs, and frankly, we wouldn't have done it with Rebecca or Josh in particular because it's not agendized, but the fact that they don't even have the courage to show up tonight and introduce themselves to us, I don't think it's because of the fires, or they're not on the front lines, they're not fixing lines, and they told us, straight to us, that they didn't feel safe, which I think as an elected official who, you know, makes tough decisions all the time is a cop-out. So I just wanted to say publicly to, to our public, and I have no idea if anyone is showing up here because they saw SCE on the agenda, that very disappointed and don't feel on this, on this front that SCE is being a very good partner, but I appreciate that you've come here to share the, the things that we are able to partner on, and if you'll pass that along to them or encourage them to watch this video in replay.
And again, I, I apologize, my understanding was that they both did get activated today, so I, I apologize, and I will, of course, share your, your sentiments...
Thank you.
For sure. And just as, as an elected, as a member of the SCE team, I do serve as an LNO, so I, I get to sit in our IMT, our Incident Management Team on a regular basis. I feel terrible for the, the entire community and our entire territory, we've been going through collectively an awful lot, so I'm, I'm glad I got to come out tonight and got to talk with you, and I'll certainly pass along your sentiments.
Thank you, I, a government relations manager needs to own up to that title. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much for coming, and we look forward to discussing more with you.
My, my pleasure, and may I just add that you have one of the finest city attorneys in all the land. I'm, I'm thankful that she sits next to me last night, so, thank you all again.
Thank you very much. All right, now I would like to welcome our city manager, Nina Hall.
So let's see, not city manager, but library manager. I'd be happy to do Mr. Hamburger's job, but probably not, that's okay, that's okay. So, good evening, Madam Mayor, City Manager Hamburger, City Council Members and City Staff. I'm doing my quarterly report for January through March, and I do want to say a little aside before I start, that thank you very much for recognizing the library is open for people to charge. That was, as you all could see in the parking lot, the thing is full during those four days that we were, and people were very nice, they came in and they charged, they knew what to do, so we very much appreciated that, and I appreciated you and the city and Amy Jones' break, opening up the Recreation Center on Thursday for the day of mourning when we were closed, because I was up there, so, and that room was filled. That was about, I'd say, 120 people charging, so. You also need to know that we have air purifiers in the library, compliments of FEMA, that just showed up, I don't know why, no one knows how they got there, but they're there, and they're throughout the library. So in addition to that, we also have, what we do in these situations for the library is in libraries like La Gracena and La Canyana that are right by the Altadena fire areas, Temple City is actually not that far away either, but when people need help with their computer work, we give them extended time so they can get that paperwork done. It's just something we automatically do, and especially in those libraries. And in those libraries also, during these times, the LA County Library puts together kits for families that have been displaced, so they might be kits for diapers, there might be kits for feminine hygiene, there might be kits for things for kids to do, for activities, so I think the county is always trying to do its due diligence to help people in these situations. So in addition to that, as you all heard when the supervisors gave their talk about the N95s, we have many N95s, we have the, want the white ones from the pandemic, and the Board of Supervisors sent out the green ones. So we have them right there at customer service, so people can just take them, we don't ca, we don't care, if they want to take a handful, go for it. So, and they sit right beside the COVID kits. So we really try to, to meet the needs in the, in our communities individual. So on with our programs, so as I always tell you, I aim for 28 to 30 programs a month. In January, we have 33, in February, we have 31 programs, and in March, we have 34. The highlight ones, since I know you all know about all our book clubs and all the other things that we do, but our highlight programs in this last period has been the Puzzle Swap, which people who are puzzle people come in and swap out games, and they're quite energetic about it, and they're very much looking forward to coming back in a quarterly situation. So we have set up a new no-cost MOU with the Sisters of Crime LA, so they are coming once a month on the third Saturday of the month with authors and talking about their programs and answering their, what people usually want to know, what makes you write books and what is your process, and then answering questions. So the first one was Saturday, and it was a kick, it was, we had four authors, and these, it was an anthology of crime fiction, so it was really very educational and entertaining. I know you don't care, but Fourth Wing, the fourth book came out yesterday, that's Onyx Storm, so we did have a, a launch party for it, and there's a lot of interest in that book, including Gilbert Cruz, who is the head of the New York Times Book Review, who said, "I gotta tell you, Onyx Storm is going to be a really hot book this year", so I thought, "I'm going to try to read it or manacy, I will try, I say that every time, but I doubt it." In addition to that, for the children, the zero to five-year-olds, City of Malibu has designated certain libraries, we are one of them, that are non-measure U recipients, which means we don't get extra books, and, and that, and Special District Two, we're in three. So we were given $800 for two programs, the first one will be next week, it is a bilingual Storytime, and that it will be a one-time thing that they'll come in, and then in, on February 8th, we're having yet another Music for Babies program, different from the one that we have every month, a different performer coming in, so that will be also taking place. So that makes a Music for Babies programs every month paid for by the Friends, this one is paid by the City of Malibu, so. And then in March, we have, as I mentioned before, Paul Stein and Phil Harmonic Musicians coming in to do a cello quintet, two cellos, two violins, and one viola, so we're very excited about that. Friends of the library pay for that as well, in that case particularly. That goes on, would like to tell you, we have our trivia program, which is wildly successful, lot of competition, as well as all the book clubs that we have. And then entering into the period we're in right now, we're into Heritage Months, and I know we talked about that last year. So I did tell you that with February being African American and Black History Month, that we do recognize programs that we put up, displays, I, in my adult programs, mystery, nonfiction, and literary fiction in February, they're all either black authors or black topics. One is the book called The Barn by Wright Thompson, it is about the murder of Emmett Till and how Mississippi has dealt with that through all these years. So, and in addition, even for the children, we do programs. This is a Abaya, Abai Omidal from Nigeria, so the children's librarian will be putting on a program in February for five, 12-year-olds to make this doll and then to learn about the culture of Nigeria. So we really do put that emphasis, so, and then, of course... So, and then of course, as you know, March is Women's History Month, so we'll do everything, all this again. So, so any questions?
How many people do you think use the library during the power outages? Like how?
I count them.
You did?
Yeah, I count them.
And what was it again?
So it's going to vary throughout the day, but the peak times will be in the middle of the afternoon and it'll be about 60 to 65 people. So that's going to be students because they're likely to panic because they've got, you know, things that are done and people coming in. The thing that I think you should know as the city council is that people feel very comfortable just coming to the library to plug in. So, but I would say in those peak times, it's about 65 people in there.
That's great. I just want to thank you again. The parking lot was overflowing and there were even people in here looking for plugs because it was, it was such a happening place. So thank you for everything.
All right. Thank you very much. See you next quarter.
And I don't have any questions. I just have gratitude. This is my first library update as a new council member and I am just so delighted. I am such a lover of libraries and such a fan of community gathering. I confess, I didn't know all the wonderful things that you did, so I can't wait as a city council member to help get the word out about these phenomenal programs.
And we do send you flyers through your, the city clerk at the end of the month so you know the things that are happening in that month. And there's something called Smarty Cats, that if you have a library card, you get in the beginning of the month, the first or second, you will get an email with every program we're putting on. So it's yet another way. And we have noticed we've had a few more people coming in for different programs and it's Smarty Cats. So, which we put out, we do it. So, but anyway, okay?
Well, thank you so much. We really appreciate you.
All right, thank you.
All right, our next report is from the Clean Power Alliance. I'll defer to Councilmember Klein Lopez.
Thank you. Before I give my report on Clean Power Alliance, I just want to remind everyone that when you get your electric bill, most of us in Agoura Hills, there's, there are two parts of it. There's the generation piece and the delivery piece. So Clean Power Alliance is the generation piece buying clean energy and all of the power safety shut offs, all the public safety power shut offs are on the delivery side. So Edison is, as we know, has reasons to shut the power down in the windy, in windy events. So particularly during this latest, you know, spur of outages with the public safety power shut offs that Edison implemented, I've gotten questions even today from our mayor of a neighbor who was inquiring with her that, just a reminder that if you have solar, but you don't have a battery backup, which is the case for a lot of people in Agoura Hills, Clean Power Alliance offers 75, $750 to $1,000 rebate for you to get a battery installed. So particularly right now, when everyone is very in tune to power outages and how to live for, you know, four, six days, I really want to stress that we have this rebate program that can contribute up to $1,000 for a backup battery to your solar. Another important item I want to remind people, remind the public that Clean Power Alliance customers have access to is the energy team. So if you don't have solar and you don't have a battery, we have an unbiased, you know, not, it's free, we're not pushing any particular company or anything like that, but we have a team that advises you on the current incentives, the current rebates and some of the processes that it takes to energize your home, whether it's solar or, you know, gasless water heater, things like that. So that's another issue that I want to make sure everyone knows. And then most important, we have other programs that, you know, I can talk about as when summer comes, you know, air conditioning rebates and things like that. But most importantly, I just want to say that we've been in contact through the fires and, you know, we're, we don't want to overstep our role, but we definitely want to have a say in supporting sustainable building and hardened, you know, rebuilding that might come down the line later on when everybody kind of comes up for air from these latest disasters. CPA wants to be a part of that conversation as appropriate. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm the representative for the Los Angeles Malibu Council of Governments. We canceled our meeting this week. We're going to be holding it next week. So I don't have a report. So I'll defer to Councilmember Anderson for the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy Advisory Committee update.
So I am delighted to be a representative on the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy. Our first meeting will be on January 27th. So I have no update because I have not yet attended a meeting, but very much looking forward to it.
Thank you. Are there any reports from staff? Seeing none, are there any reports from city council? Okay, moving on. Public comments. This section is reserved for persons wishing to speak on items that are not listed on the agenda, that are under the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. If you have something to distribute to the city council, please do not approach the dais, hand your item to the city clerk and she will distribute it to us on your behalf. Public testimony is limited to three minutes per speaker and a speaker's time may not be transferred to another speaker. Persons addressing the city council shall not engage in disorderly conduct that disrupts or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of the meeting. I will now defer to the city clerk.
Thank you. We have one speaker card, Haylen Conrad.
Welcome.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council. My name's Haylen Conrad and I was recently elected to the City of Malibu Council on the night of Franklin Fire. And I wanted to come and introduce myself to the City of Agoura Hills because we're neighbors and we're friends. Right now, we're dealing with the Palisades Fire. I wanted to express our gratitude to you guys. I have about 60 friends who lost everything and it's really tragic. We're both, we're all facing similar issues, which is P S P S, SCE, droughts, fire, wind now. We had 100 mile, those winds were crazy. But I really just wanted to let you know that I think we're together, we're stronger together. And I am going to leave you guys my card and I'm here for Agoura Hills. I love you guys. I'm over here all the time. Thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight, Haylen. We really appreciate it. We'll share, we'll share the information. Thank you so much. All right, now we're moving on to the consent calendar. Are there any questions from the city council on the consent calendar? Thank you. Seeing none, I will now call for a motion and a second to adopt the consent calendar.
Councilmember Anderson moves to adopt the consent calendar.
Mayor Protem Wolf, I'll second.
Thank you. We'll move on to the roll call.
Thank you. And just for the record, there were no public comments. Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Anstead?
Aye.
Councilmember Klein Lopez?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Wolf?
Aye.
Mayor Sylvester?
Aye.
Mayor Sylvester, you have approval five to zero.
Okay. Now we're moving on. Can I defer to you for a moment? Are we going on to this right now? Thank you. So we're now moving on to item seven. We're going to conduct a public hearing to consider the adoption of resolution number 25-2093, a resolution of the city council of the City of Agoura Hills, California, revoking business license number 006982, New Era Performance and Tuning LLC pursuant to section 6819 of the Agoura Hills Municipal Code and making a determination of exemption under the California Environmental Quality Act. So I will, do I go to Denise? I will now, oh, sorry, I'm learning this as I go. I will now open the public hearing to consider the revocation of business license number 006982 for New Era Performance and Tuning LLC for violations of the Agoura Hills Municipal Code and other applicable laws and regulations. There will now be an announcement by the city prosecutor.
Good morning. My name is Eric Marcus. I'm the city prosecutor.
Well, I hope it's good evening.
It is good evening. I apologize. My name is Eric Marcus and I'm the city prosecutor. I'll be representing staff for purposes of this evening's hearing. Before we proceed, I did want to note that shortly after notice of this public hearing was, was sent out, I received a call and spoke with the business owner, Mr. Espaza, who indicated to me that he received notice secondhand. I've spoken to Mr. Espaza about that issue. I've also spoken to him about the fact that we're going to be presenting some evidence tonight, some of which he just received. And Mr. Espaza has agreed and indicated that he would like to proceed this evening. So we intend to do so and are ready to move forward.
Thank you. City staff and the city prosecutor has the burden of proof by the preponderance of the evidence. This means the evidence demonstrates that the proposition is more likely true than not true. Please note that the formal rules of evidence and procedure do not apply to this hearing. However, the city council, in consultation with the city attorney, will make rulings on objections and evidence. Irrelevant and/or unduly repetitive, the evidence shall be excluded. The city council reserves the right to allow evidence and consider the weight of the evidence during deliberations. There are no official time limits on staffs or the business owner's presentation, but we ask that the testimony not be redundant. Could all legal counsel for city staff, the business owner and the city council state their appearances for the record?
Yes, good evening. Eric Marcus for the city.
Can you please come so it's recorded? Thank you.
My name's Alexander Espaza and I'm the owner of New Era Performance.
And the city council has to state their names, correct?
No, it's me. So I am Candace Lee, the city attorney for the City of Agoura Hills, and I'll be advising the city council. If I may just ask Mr. Espaza a question for the record. So I understand that you had conversations with the city prosecutor at first, had noted that you had noticed secondhand, but you're okay proceeding in this evening and you're waiving any arguments as to notice. Is that correct? We can proceed this evening with this hearing.
So. Yeah. So I agreed to continue because I'm, it's been too long. We all, we, we all, we've been here plenty of times. I'm over it. I've done everything I can. The only thing I ask is the evidence that was provided to me as soon as I walked in not be entered into evidence because I had no time to prepare and I want to be able to get this over with. So I came prepared, but I don't want the evidence that was just given to me as I walked in because I did not, was not able to prepare for any of that.
So I believe the evidence was provided in the agenda packet and I'm not sure, to the extent you received notice, but I think the issue is, you'll have to ask the city prosecutor, but I think they're, they intend to move forward with their evidence.
There was, there was no evidence provided to me until only what was on the, well, I received in the mail on Saturday, which I opened up on Monday, which was two days ago. And there was the evidence that was told right now when I walked in was not part of it. There was no USB drives or anything included besides the 37-page agenda that was given during that, in the mail when I got it on Monday. So that, the new evidence I just got right now is, just received this as I walked in 30 minutes ago.
Mr. Marcus, how would you like to proceed?
And that would be my.
Thank you, Ms. Lee. I actually provided Mr. Espaza a copy of the report upon which our presentation will be based last week via email. Mr. Espaza also acknowledged his receipt thereof shortly after I sent it. With respect to the other, to the other exhibits that the city intends to introduce, one is a copy of Mr. Espaza's business license. I see no prejudice in council acknowledging the existence of that business license. Other exhibits are letters sent by my office to Mr. Espaza. So he certainly had copies of those for years. As I indicated, our acoustical engineering report was already provided to Mr. Espaza. And to the extent he takes issue with the WAV files, I provided Mr. Espaza a thumb drive of the audio recordings captured by our monitoring devices. Council, you've also been provided those. There's hundreds of audio files. I intend to present only one of them this evening. We will proceed introducing that one recording. And to the extent Mr. Espaza has an objection, I'd be happy to address it at that time.
So it's your recommendation to proceed this evening and you will address the issues of evidence as we go along?
Well, Mr. Espaza's indicated that he would like to proceed tonight and we're prepared to do so. And I do not see any prejudice in moving.
I'm not prepared to, I don't have anything for the WAV files that I have not even heard. And they were never provided to me. So I will proceed if we are able to take that out of the evidence and we continue with what was presented to me, which there is, the city does have a report of the audio, which I'm okay with as far as the report goes. But the actual audio files that were presented as I walked in, I would like to exclude those. If we can do that, then we can continue and just get this over with.
I think when we get to the auto files, you'll note that the purpose of me using the auto files is not to demonstrate or establish that what is exhibited in that particular audio file exceeds any noise threshold. It's simply to distinguish between a dynamometer and engine exhaust. So I don't believe it will necessarily be determinative of any of the issues before the council this evening.
I just, I don't, I don't want that evidence to be included at all. I, I was not able, I have no time to prepare. There is a report from the audio company that I approved and we can continue with that. And if that's enough, then let's get this over with. Yeah.
Mr. Marcus, well, first of all, I think we need to get on the record. You have a gentleman here who continues to advise you. Can you state your name? And you've joined us in the past, so it would be helpful for the record if you could just state your name and explain your role in this.
Yes, I've been here since the beginning, all four times.
Yes.
I am a customer of Mr. Espaza. However, I do have a special set of skills that I try to assist him with as he assists me with his skills.
And what is your name again?
My name is Francis Stewart.
Francis Stewart. E W or U A?
S T E W A R T.
Okay.
Francis with an I.
And this is my first time, well, now the fourth or fifth time up here. So he's been helping me because I'm not good at confronting people and I stumble and it's just not what I do. I can talk to you about something else, but that's why he's been here, helping me. And he's the one that kind of guides me on how to properly address people and stuff like that. And in this case, the evidence part where I, I can't do anything about it because, but I want to get this over with because I've been coming every single time and it just keeps getting pushed back. And it's not me. We've all known that last time here, it got dropped and it was not me. I was here prepared to, to fight and prove my evidence and so that's why.
And for the record, Mr. Stewart, you are not an attorney, you're just assisting?
No, I am an attorney, but I'm not representing him. I'm just assisting with the presentation. I'm not representing him. I stated that the last time when the prior mayor was here.
Okay.
Oops, sorry, my medication.
Mr. Marcus, would you help, do you want to sidebar with the business owner? This is all kind of new to us, this information.
No, not at all. I think that I'm comfortable proceeding and to the extent that he may object to a certain piece of evidence, we can consider that in due course. I don't feel any further delay is necessary.
The thing is though, is that that evidence is already going to come in. It's going to have the effect of what they're trying to do. We have not even seen or heard this information. And like Mr. Espaza was telling you, he received the letter of notice from the city in the mail on Saturday because he was called, he wasn't even in town. It was postmarked the 17th. We're only here at the 22nd. He received it on the 20th when he returned back home. Previously to that. Previously to that, I believe it was the 15th, he had reached out to Mr. Marcus, and Mr. Marcus sent him a copy of the Acoustical Group's report, and we have been going over that for several days.
And if I can add, the only reason I got the report was because there is a shop that got a letter in the mail saying that they had to be here. I was not aware. I had to contact Mr. Marcus directly. So I'm trying to take the initiative to get this over with, but it just keeps on one thing or the another. So I'm here, I have what we originally posted on the, what was it, the agenda, that I'm okay with, but just the audio that was just submitted or given to me, because I can't even hear it, right now as I walked in, if we could just exclude that from evidence, then we can just continue. The report is there, the data's there, everything is there. Just exclude the audio is all I'm asking.
And this is actually the second time this has happened. The first time, we were not given notice, and I ended up calling the day of that meeting, I believe it was April 10th, and I was emailed, city emailed me a link.
Well, let's hold off on that because you can do that during the objection.
Sure.
Just a second. And I'm actually not the decision maker here on what's admitted into evidence. We were just trying to get some housekeeping items out of the way. I'm sorry, Mr. Marcus, you...
Yeah, you know, I think we're getting bogged down here in minutia. If it would please counsel, I'd be happy to proceed without the audio. I have my acoustical engineer here who can testify us to distinction.
Okay, fantastic. Then, Mayor, if you want to move to the part of the next step, which is asking them about stipulations to facts or evidence. Thank you.
Thank you. We are proceeding without that evidence being submitted. So could the party's legal counsel advise the city council if they have reached any stipulations as to facts and/or evidence? If so, we ask that the stipulations be made a part of the record and that copies of any stipulated exhibits be provided to the mayor and the city council.
Madam Mayor, this is Eric Marcus.
No stipulation.
I agree with Mr. Esparsa. There have been no stipulations.
Okay. Thank you. So if you could listen carefully in terms of how we're going to be numbering and identifying the following exhibits. So any exhibits submitted by staff's counsel, so that would be the city prosecutor, will be identified by sequential numbers, 1, 2, or 3. This is aside from whatever, how it's numbered in the staff report. Please identify your exhibits by 1, 2, and 3 when you introduce them, please. And then any exhibits submitted by the business owners' council or representative shall be identified by sequential letters. So please identify your exhibits as A, B, and C, please. If you need some sticky notes to, you know, stick on there, let us know, but you'll be identifying them as A, B, and C. All identified and relevant exhibits will be deemed admitted into evidence absent a sustained objection. Thank you, Mayor. Oh, sorry, one more announcement. I also want to remind the council to ensure to ask all questions prior to deliberation to ensure that any information in evidence you rely upon is part of the official record. If you ask any questions during deliberation, we may have to reopen the public hearing, which may further prolong the process. Thank you.
Thank you. Does any council member have any ex parte communications to disclose? I see none. This is the time for the city staff and its council to make its presentation.
Madam Mayor, I, a bit bashful in saying this, but may I have a two-minute recess, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
I see no objection? Thank you. We'll have a two-minute recess.
When dyno, when dynomometers or dynos are operated, vehicles are often operated at high RPMs, typically where vehicles see the most power. And naturally, of course, this results in significant generation of noise, both the dyno itself and the vehicles. New Era's business premises is zoned in the old Agora Commercial Center and designated in the general plan as commercial retail service. Pursuant to Agora Hills Section 9331, the purpose of the city's commercial retail service district is to provide areas for a diversity of general commercial, retail, and service uses. Importantly, the district is intended, and I quote, "to provide a positive experience for visitors and community residents and to foster business activity." New Era Performance received its business license on April 16th, 2016, and that would, I'm going to introduce a copy of New Era's business license as Exhibit 1. You will find that in the exhibit binders each of you have been provided under Tab 1. The business license will be found on the last two pages of the exhibit. As you'll note, the license authorizes New Era to perform motor vehicle repairs. Now, pursuant to Agora Hills Section, our municipal code Section 6819A, every business license is granted and accepted with the express understanding that city council may revoke it if it's in the best interest of the health, welfare, or safety of the public and if grounds for revocation exist. So when we're considering business license revocation, then it's a two-step analysis. In the first step, council must determine whether grounds for revocation exist. And as you see in the slide, grounds for revocation are set forth at Agora Hills Municipal Code Section 6819B. Pursuant to Subsection 6, a business license may be revoked, or grounds for revocation exists, rather, if the business is being operated in a manner determined to constitute an immediate threat or menace to the health or safety of the public. Pursuant to Subsection 7, a license might also be revoked if the equipment used to conduct the business fails to comply with the city's health, zoning, fire, building, and safety laws. Subsection 6 also provides that a failure to correct an objectionable condition that constitutes a public nuisance within a reasonable time after lawful notice from a governmental entity is prima facie proof that the business is being operated in a manner to constitute an immediate threat or menace to the health or safety of the public. After we determine if grounds for revocation exist, you, as council, must determine whether in your judgment it's in the best interest of the health, safety, or welfare of the public to go ahead and revoke that business license. Under these circumstances, in light of the years-long recalcitrants that you're going to be hearing about shortly, we believe that the business constitutes an immediate threat or menace to the health or safety of the public. The dynamometer operation at the business has resulted in noise levels far in excess of those permitted by the city, and that noise has regularly and significantly disrupted the comfortable use and enjoyment of adjacent property as well as the ability of the owners of that property to conduct their business. The city's noise standards are set forth at Agora Hills Section 9305. And what that section provides is that all operations and businesses in the city's commercial districts, where this business is located, shall not create any noise that would exceed an exterior noise level of 60 decibels during the hours of 10 p.m. to 7 a.m. and 65 decibels during the hours of 7 a.m. to 10 p.m. Agora Hills Section 1200 provides that any violation of the city's code is a public nuisance. Thus, if New Era is operating in violation of Section 9305 by exceeding the city's noise limits, that in of itself as a matter of law constitutes a public nuisance. Now, I want to take you through a bit of the background that gave, giving rise to this proceeding. In June, on June 14th, 2017, rather, the city received complaints that New Era's operations were creating substantial noise that was disturbing adjacent property owners and affecting their ability to conduct business. On June 20th, 2018, approximately a year later, city officials and a representative of my office met with Mr. Esparsa at the business premises. Following that meeting, Mr. Esparsa agreed to take steps to reduce the noise resulting from his dynamometer operation by keeping the roll-up door at the premises down while operating the dyno and to further install sound insulation. Thereafter, the noise appeared to stop and the city didn't receive further complaints for a substantial period of time. Three years later, however, the complaints recurred. Following the city's receipt of these complaints, my office sent Mr. Esparsa a letter in which we advised that we had received the complaints, advised of the city's noise regulations, and requested that he immediately and permanently prevent the occurrence of any further disturbances. A copy of that letter is identified as Exhibit 2 in your exhibit binder, and I request that that be moved in, well, I suppose we could deal with that at the end. But that's identified as Exhibit 2. I'm marking that as Exhibit 2. Notwithstanding the issuance of this letter, the city continued to receive additional complaints about the noise only a week later, on April 15th and 16th. On that date, the city received what was labeled by the complainant, a petition to the city of Agora Hills, which indicated that the noise was significantly louder than other noise, including the freeway traffic. I have a copy of that petition here, which I've marked as Exhibit 3. Following the city's receipt of that petition in April 2021, staff has received further complaints, rather frequent complaints, at various times regarding the noise generated by New Era. In support of one such complaint, one of our community residents who's here actually in person sent the city a video of what she was experiencing at her business, which is approximately 50 to 75 feet, perhaps maybe a bit more, from New Era. And I wanted to go ahead and play that so you have an idea of what our complainants are experiencing. This is not the WAV files that we've talked about.
So could you clarify what various audio files there are? And please, if you want to come forward so you can make your objection. You want to play what file and which files are you objecting to? So, Mr. Marcus.
The WAV files that I understood they were objecting to and which I agreed to not introduce are the WAV files captured by the sound monitoring devices installed by our acoustical engineer. This is a separate file and is really not evidence that the business owner is exceeding the noise standards. This is merely reflective of what the community is experiencing. So this doesn't necessarily go to the violation. I just wanted to provide counsel...
And so you're objecting to...
We were not going to be playing any audios.
What would the council like to do? Unfortunately, I'm not the decision maker. Well, she's going to speak later.
I'll move on. I'll move on.
So you will not include that in...
No, that's fine.
Okay, thank you.
You can strike that. Whoa, whoa, sorry. Okay. Needless to say, we have received complaints, both framed as petitions and even video evidence and audio evidence of what the community is going through. And suffice to say, we've heard that this is having a significant impact on everybody... And suffice to say, we've heard that this is having a significant impact on everybody's daily lives. In any event, following the city's receipt of these additional complaints, staff undertook an investigation of New Era's business operations. That investigation culminated in the city's retention of an acoustical engineer to perform a noise study of the business and, in particular, its dynamometer operations. The acoustical engineer that we retained is Robert Wu, who's the principal of Acoustics Group, Inc. Mr. Wu is here in council chamber seated to my right, and I would like to take his testimony with respect to what the results of his noise study were and the procedures that he utilized to obtain them.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Are we going to have an opportunity to cross-examine this expert as to his report?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, that being the case, we need to have an administration of oath. The city clerk will administer the oath to the witness. Do they need to stand? That's in part, you're part of the script. But I don't know who the witnesses are.
These are witnesses right here.
Right here, okay, Mr. Wu, thank you so much, sorry about that. Please stand and raise your right hand. Do you solemnly state that the evidence you shall give in this matter shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So help you God. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wu. Can you please, or can you please tell us where you're currently employed?
Madam Mayor, council members and staff, thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I'm Robert Wu, and I'm the principal consultant and founder of the Acoustics Group. I am currently employed by the Acoustics Group.
Thank you. And in your capacity as the founder and principal of the Acoustics Group, what are your general job responsibilities?
Well, I manage the administrative and technical direction of the company. So I'm involved in all phases of management of the firm.
And in that capacity, do you personally conduct and participate in noise and vibration studies?
Yes, I do.
Okay. And over the course of your career, how many, if you have an estimate, noise and vibration studies have you prepared for both public and private sector clients?
Well, in the thousands, so 1,000 to 2,000.
Thank you. And you also provide consulting, both to municipalities and private projects with respect to noise and vibration reduction?
Yes, we provide acoustical and vibration consulting for cities throughout California, Portland, Washington, Arizona, Nevada, primarily everything west of the Mississippi. We've also done work in Asia, in the Dominican Republic, Mexico, Brazil, et cetera.
And in connection with your, the services that you provide to these clients all across the world, do you also opine as to building modification and mitigation installation?
Absolutely. We've provided consultation services for architectural design, for building modifications, for construction defect, for building repair. We've been doing that for almost 40 years.
Thank you. And would I be correct in assuming that in connection with almost every project that you handle, everything is done with a, with an eye towards compliance with governmentally imposed noise standards?
Yeah, just about every project has a set of standards that we need to comply with. Part of what we do is we review the standards, we come up with a game plan for executing our project, we go out in the field and we execute the project, we evaluate the data, we analyze, depending if it's a design project, how to protect or meet those standards, and then we provide a report with recommendations.
Understood. Now, in order to serve in your capacity as founder and principal consultant at the Acoustics Group, did you have to undergo any specialized education or training?
Yeah, as part of my education, I studied applied physics at UCLA with emphasis in acoustics and optics. And I chose to go into the acoustics field. As I started working when I was younger, I continued my education in acoustics with extension courses and workshop courses and certification through testing from the Institute of Noise Control Engineering.
What is the Institute of Noise Control Engineering?
It's just an organization of professionals that try to provide guidance, education for people that work in the field. There is no professional licensure in acoustical engineering. So this is one avenue for getting knowledge, for allowing people that want to stay in the field to be certified that they are qualified to work in the field.
And would the, would it be fair to say that the Institute of Noise Control Engineering is one of the preeminent organizations that professionals in your area of expertise can participate in?
Well, in the United States, it's probably the only one.
Okay. Do you have a specific, I mean, I know we're talking about acoustics and acoustical engineering, but do you have a specific area of expertise within the umbrella of acoustical engineering?
I've been fortunate enough to be busy my whole career. So I've been doing this for almost 40 years, and it's allowed me the opportunity to work with cities, to work with counties for code enforcement, to work with architects for design, to work with public agencies like Caltrans and UDOT, AZDOT for highway design. I've worked on the Metro Rail projects underneath Hollywood Boulevard. I've worked on airfields, airports. So kind of a specialist in all those things because, as a consultant, you've got to work on the project that you get.
Sure. Well, today we're talking about a dynamometer project. Have you ever worked on a dynamometer project in the past?
No, our firm probably does a handful of automotive repair projects or service projects every year.
Okay. Now, I retained you in connection with this matter. Would you mind sharing with council what the scope of your assignment was in this case?
We were asked to evaluate the noise from New Era. And I had discussed that with you, and we identified a couple of measurement locations where we want to conduct measurements. And obviously, these locations are closest to the New Era facility. And that would be the point of enforcement of the city's noise ordinance. So our goal off the bat was to go out there, make some limited measurements, and then we had the opportunity to conduct a long-term measurement at one location, and we proceeded to do that.
Okay. And, you know, earlier, before I, before I proceed, I would like to mark as Exhibit 5 Mr. Wu's resume, which you have on screen.
New Era's representative, Mr. Stewart, is stipulating that you will allow Exhibit 5 into evidence? Okay, thank you.
Okay, I appear to have an issue with my presentation, but the next thing I want to discuss is the results of your study and how you went about performing it, which I believe is summarized quite nicely in your report, which I'll mark as Exhibit 6 and which council may find in the Exhibit 6 tab of the binders that you've been provided. Initially, do you have any understanding of the city's performance standards with respect to noise generation in commercial districts?
Well, only what you had presented on the video board above, and that's essentially for commercial operations. Daytime, daytime limits for noise cannot exceed 65 dB.
Okay. And, and I think you've indicated that you were dispatched to the premises to perform testing. And did you perform that testing as referenced in your report?
Yes, we did.
Okay. And when about, was that testing performed?
The dates of the testing were August 29 through September 1, and then later on, we came back and we performed more testing on September 28.
Okay. And your report indicates that noise measurements were taken primarily from the ground floor exterior patio at 28205 Agora Road, which I believe is a property located almost directly behind the New Era Performance Shop. Is that correct?
I believe so. I would call that south.
Okay, immediately south.
Immediately south. They share a common property line.
Sure. And this area on the property where you performed your testing, did it have an unobstructed or an unimpeded view of New Era, or was there an obstruction separating the noise monitoring equipment from the dynamometer? Was there any sort of wall in between?
Yeah, there's a wood fence at the property line.
Okay. And would a wood fence have any attenuative impact on the noise measurements?
Generally, a wood fence, a solid wood fence like what we saw there, could have about 5 decibels of noise reduction. It really depends on the geometrics. And what I mean by that is what is the elevation of the cars at New Era? What's the elevation of the receiving area? But in general, you're going to probably get about 5 decibels of noise reduction.
Okay. And I noticed in your report, you indicated that you're, and you previously mentioned that you performed both short-term and continuous long-term noise measurements. Is that, is that correct?
Yes, we started off by conducting short-term, but then with your request, we converted that into a continuous long-term measurement, where we measured for 48 hours continuously.
And, and over the course of those continuous measurements, every single sound that occurred during that period of time was recorded. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. What type of equipment did you utilize in connection with your testing?
We use what's called an acoustical analyzer, and it's called a precision analyzer, a Type 1 instrument, because it's accurate to within 1/10 of a decibel. This instrument is calibrated in a laboratory and certified for accuracy, and the data is admissible in court.
Okay. And the, the instrument also, in addition to capturing noise levels data, it also audio records. Is that correct?
Yes, it has the ability to audio record.
And did you utilize that function in connection with the testing occurred in this case?
Yes, we did.
Okay. And how are the measurements recorded? How is the audio recorded?
Well, it's proprietary, proprietary within electronics, but it's stored in electronic media. And then using the software of the instrument, we can listen to it, post-process it, move it forward and back to look at peaks and valleys, and then we can export it to a WAV file.
Sure. Now, in this instance, and we'll get there in a second, but your report contains a number of findings with respect to noise levels. I assume the numbers were derived from the testing equipment. However, did you personally review and listen to the WAV files that were captured in connection with your testing?
Yes, we did.
So it wasn't simply that you just looked at whatever numbers your machine spit out? You actually listened to the recordings to confirm that the noise that you were, the noise that you recorded and is reflected in your report was attributable to dynamometer operation at New Era Performance. Is that correct?
That's correct. And keep in mind that because we're measuring there continuously, there's other instances where we had engines revving, and we elected to separate that data out, and that's presented in the report as well. So we really want to hone in on what noise events were caused by the dyno operation. And that's what we've summarized in our report.
Okay. And for at least some of the tests reflected in your report, or some of the data reflected in your report, you were physically present for the dyno operation. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And the noise generated while you were physically present for the testing, that's consistent with the noise that you heard when you listened to the audio files. Is that correct? Of the other instances of testing where you weren't physically present?
Yes.
Okay. And so it's your professional opinion that the noise reflected in your report that we're attributing to the dyno is 100% attributable to the dyno at New Era and nothing else?
Yes.
Okay.
Completely leading, council is testifying for this expert who is answering with a yes or no. He's reading the facts to the person, and the person is acknowledging the facts. That is an improper examination of a witness by the prosecution. Direct evidence will elicit answers and testimony, not testify for the person.
My understanding that the formal rules of evidence do not apply to this proceeding?
That is correct. Formal rules of evidence do not apply to this proceeding, but it is up to the council to determine whether or not they're okay with that line of questioning.
We're okay with that kind of questioning. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, I want to move now to what I've marked as Exhibit 6-2, which is a summary of the measured noise events contained in Exhibit 6, which is your report. How many dyno runs did you record and evaluate over the course of your two continuous studies?
We identified 15 clear dyno runs, and that's what is summarized in the table.
Okay. And how did you determine the noise, the level of the noise created by each run?
Well, the, the level of the noise that's created each, by each run is determined in the post-processing software that is provided by the instrument manufacturer. But essentially, what you do is you review the data and you look for the spikes in the data. Then you go and you listen to the data, and you look for the starting point and the endpoint, and the software will allow you to take out the, what we call is the LEQ and the LMAX noise levels.
Okay. We're going to get to LEQ and LMAX in a second. But, so I'm correct, basically what you did was you took the, you took the numbers, you listened to it, confirmed it was the dyno, and then basically used the timestamp and the numbers to determine what it was, or what the level of the noise was?
Yes.
Now, I notice in your report that approximately 10 of the 15 instances that you recorded exceeded 65 decibels. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And you also have an indication in your report with respect to whether dyno doors were closed or dyno doors were open. Can you explain to me what you mean by that description?
Well, being there and observing the operation, what we witnessed was that the operator will start up the vehicle, drive it into the garage where the dyno is installed. You can hear it loading onto the ramp. Then they'll secure the vehicle by strapping the vehicle to the dyno, and then they'll start their run where the engine is revved. You can hear it loading onto the ramp. Then they'll secure the vehicle by strapping the vehicle to the dyno. And then they'll start their run where the engine is revved and the engine characteristics are monitored. But in that process, you can hear the sound change because the door is being closed to the dynamometer. And I, I'm not sure why they do that, that way. Obviously, if the car was parked with the door closed before the engine is run, then the noise will be lower. But they may have the reasons why they do that.
But you were able to determine unequivocally, based on your review of the auto files, whether or not doors, the garage doors were open or closed?
Yeah. To the extent we can, we, we don't hear a difference in the sound. When that door is closed, the sound level will drop significantly. And we didn't hear that in the audio files.
Sure. But as I'm looking at your, the results of your report, it appears that notwithstanding the fact that the doors may be up or down, noise levels exceeded the city's threshold under either scenario. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Now, you just mentioned LEQ and LMAX. With the report referencing that the LEQ noise levels were from fifty-four-point-eight to eighty-eight decibels. Can you explain to counsel what LEQ is?
LEQ is what the industry has developed to describe noise. And what it simply is, is the energy average of the noise. So...
So would that be like the average sound level over a period of time?
It is, but it's on an energy basis. To get technical, when sound is created from an event, let's just use a car pass by, it may start out lower and it'll rise and then it'll drop as the vehicle gets further away. That, that curve of the noise, because it's not constant, is more easily described if we describe the sound as an energy average. And that energy average is if the sound were to be constant for the entire duration.
Certainly. So this, this column, LEQ dB, is essentially the average decibel. To put it in layman's terms, it's basically the average, the average loudness of that particular run. Is that true?
That's a layman's way of saying it.
Okay. But good enough for government work?
Well, it's the energy average sound level.
Understood. And LMAX would be, I suppose, the maximum noise frequency or the maximum volume measured during a particular test?
Yes. If the test was ten seconds and the highest noise was eighty or ninety or sixty, whatever it is, then that high point is identified as the LMAX.
Sure.
For the expert to explain the report, he's stating what he wants to hear and having it answered. I would like to have the acoustic consultant give the testimony.
I, I think you will have a chance to cross-examine. Isn't that correct? So then you may do so at that time. Any objections, you know, questions that you have to him? Thank you.
We're gonna wrap up with the report here, but I think that we can explain the report quite succinctly. Based on your testing and the data set forth in your report, did the dyno operation at New Era result in noise levels in excess of those permitted by the city?
Yes, they did.
Okay. And, and that's because the noise that it generated exceeded sixty-five decibels during the hours of seven AM to ten PM?
Yes.
Okay. And in fact, according to your testing, maximum noise levels at some point reached ninety decibels with numerous instances in the seventies and the eighties. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Now, what's, you know, we're talking about numbers and, and this is great. It's the science, you know, we've established or you're testing, you've determined rather, that the noise generated at New Era does exceed the threshold permitted by the city. But just for counsel's edification, frankly for my own, what is the significance of these increases? How is it perceived by the human ear? Is, you know, if, if, if the dyno is exceeding the city's noise limits by twenty-five decibels, how is that perceived?
Well, that's, that's probably four to five times as loud as the city's noise order limit.
So, just so that I'm clear, it would, it's twenty decibels seemingly not much. But to the human ear, it's a magnitude of four? So as, so where I'm speaking to, it'd be like I'm, I'm yelling in your ear?
Yeah. The reason it's like that is because the way noise is evaluated physically, it's a sound pressure wave. And the, the range of the human ear and that amount of pressure that is at the threshold of hearing compared to at the upper end, that's a very broad range in terms of pressure. And the scientists that developed these criteria, they determined that it's just too difficult to interpret what those numbers mean. So they went to a logarithmic, logarithmic scale, just like the Richter scale, and that compresses the sound numbers. So it's something that's more easily relatable. But in general, a three-decibel change is about the threshold of what the human ear can perceive. A ten-decibel increase is twice as loud.
And a twenty-decibel increase, would that be four times as loud?
It's probably four times as loud.
Okay. And just to round out your testimony, is it your professional opinion, based on the study you performed, your personal visit to the site and your analysis of the WAV files as compared to your equipment data, that the dynamometer operation at New Era exceeds, or that the noise emitted by the dynamometer operation at New Era exceeds that permitted by the city?
Yes.
Okay. I'm not finished with my presentation, but I am concluded with my direct testimony of Mr. Wu. I'm not sure if Mr. Asparza's counsel would like to cross-examine him at this time or at the conclusion of my presentation.
Yes, please come forward.
Not as counsel. Mr. Wu, were you present when these readings were taken?
I was present when the initial parts of the readings were taken. I was present when the instruments were installed and secured.
Okay, so...
And I retrieved the instruments as well.
How many dyno runs did you...
Excuse me a second. We can't hear you.
You can speak into the microphone.
Yes, thank you.
How many dyno runs were you present for?
I believe five to six.
Well, would it be more accurate, the first three that is in your report?
Well, the first three in the report, a couple of other dyno runs from, at another location.
Okay. Okay, looking at the acoustical report, it's actually, we've included it in a binder for the counsel, listed under Exhibit D, page two, page three. Do you have that in front of you?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Do they say dyno doors closed?
The first three events do.
So were you present for those three events with the dyno door closed?
Yes.
And what was the readings on those?
As summarized in Table one, the first event was a sixty-three-point-two dB, LEQ, with a LMAX of sixty-three-point-four. For event number two, the LEQ was sixty and the LMAX was sixty-point-nine. And for event number three, the LEQ was fifty-four-point-eight and the LMAX was fifty-seven-point-nine.
Considering the rest of the dates, times, and numbers, refer to dyno doors likely open, were you present with those readings?
No.
How did you get those readings?
They're in the continuous measurement data.
Okay. And are you familiar with the area in which this automotive shop is located?
Just at the immediate location.
And what is the largest noise contributor to that area?
Well, there's vehicular traffic, there's occasional aircraft.
Would that be the, would that be the 101 freeway?
Yes.
And there's actually a road that's quite heavily trafficked in front of the business, Dorothy Drive, correct?
Well, I don't know how heavily trafficked it is, but there is a road in front of Dorothy Drive.
Okay. Prior to you being, well, when you were retained by the City of Agora, did you meet with the attorney and code enforcement?
We spoke by phone.
Okay. Did they provide you any documentation?
I, I think all, my recollection is they provided the address.
Did they ever go over a Venon Clausen acoustics report?
No.
Okay. How did you come up with the location to place the instrument meter?
Part of our discussion was that we would identify the nearest points, property boundaries to the New Era facility.
So were you aware that Venon, have you ever heard of Venon Clausen?
I've heard of them, yes.
Were you aware that they prepared a report previous to your report?
Not when I started our survey.
But have you reviewed that?
No.
Well, what do you mean, not until after you started your survey?
I, I heard that they were working on this...
How did you hear that?
...project through Mr. Marcus.
So he did not share that report with you?
I haven't seen it today.
No. Prior to coming in today? From the time when you were, you discussed with him till today, have you reviewed that report?
No, I've never seen it.
Did he review with you the contents of that report?
No.
Would it surprise you that that report measured sixty-nine decibels up to eighty-seven point, or eighty-nine-point-one-seven decibels? Would that be surprising to you?
For what?
For that area.
So what are you measuring?
Noise.
What kind of noise?
Well, it was alleged that it was the New Era performance noise.
That report can allege that. But my report, what we did was we went event by event and we extracted the dyno noise. So there are other noise sources that contribute to the ambient noise environment.
But it would...
Those sound levels from those other sources are excluded from the data that you see in Table one.
Would it surprise you that there were, in the prior report, measurements up to eighty-nine-point-one-seven in that area?
I have no opinion about that.
Would it surprise you that when those measurements were taken from the same location you took your measurements in Table one, that New Era Performance was closed on those days?
On the days that I measured?
No, on the days that Venon Clausen measured up to eighty-nine-point-one-seven.
I have no opinion about that. I don't know anything about that report.
I, I've kind of sat on my hands here, but I would object to the entire line of questioning with respect to the Venon Clausen report on the grounds that it's completely irrelevant.
Well, I don't believe it's irrelevant because it shows a, a course of the area where they had measured four days. Mr. Asparza's shop was closed. On all of those days, there was not one time that they measured that the measurements were below sixty-nine decibels. They rose all the way up to eighty-nine-point-one-seven. And when we first came back, came in here, I believe it was in May, the prosecution presented that as evidence of Mr. Asparza's operation. We then showed, which is in our binder with you, dyno pictures. I forgot the past mayor's name who was here, but I recall, I think Mayor Sylvester was...
I, I was here and several other members were here. And we are not including that report, so we're not basing any of our rulings tonight on that report. It's irrelevant.
Well, it, it actually is more, it shows that there is a loud noises in that area other than his shop. It's very relevant to prove a fact that we're trying to show.
I think it's appropriate for New Era to introduce that on their direct examining, on, on, on their presentation. This is right now cross-examination of Mr. Wu.
Sure. I'm just bringing it up because they made an objection.
And for the record, it appears that counsel is deeming that irrelevant because that Venon Clausen report is not, has not been entered into evidence and the prosecution has not entered it into evidence. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Now, you were not present on the times that's in your report that says dyno doors likely open, correct?
Correct.
Who was present?
None of my staff members were. Only our instrumentation were.
Was, so there was nobody monitoring the instrumentation?
No.
So this was an uncontrolled setting where you had put instruments in locations in an area that is in the freeway corridor? And you're able to distinguish what noises are coming from where?
Clearly.
How?
The noise signature of the dyno operation is very distinctive. And when you take the time to go event by event, you can clearly identify noise sources from, coming from the dyno operation. And you can identify noise events that we identify as non-dino operations, even though they are engine revving. And we elected to exclude that from the data in Table one.
Well, are you aware the dyno isn't the one that actually makes the noise?
Based on the noise signature, yes.
And it's the automobile exhaust that makes the noise, correct?
Well, it's a combination of that. So the dyno noise comes from the engine, it comes from the engine exhaust, and it comes from the dyno revving. All that is part of the dyno test event.
How many automotive shops specifically relating to dynameters have you investigated?
Probably over fifty.
Can you name one?
This garage in Peoria, I've probably done five of them last year.
And what was the reason for you to go out and check a dyno in Peoria?
Brand-new construction. The community is concerned about automotive repair noise. So the city required a noise study to evaluate the noise and have us assist in the design of the facility to, to require the noise to be in compliance with the city's noise standards.
And are different cities' noise standards different?
Yeah, they can vary.
They can vary higher, correct?
It just depends on the city.
Okay. Now, in your report, you also stated that... you also stated that. In your report, you stated that because the location is situated close to the Ventura freeway, the background noise from vehicular traffic tended to dominate this location and the noise from the dyno and the car exhaust events were less noticeable.
Can you tell me where you read that from?
And did you write this report?
I'm asking you, where are you reading that from?
Well, pages are not numbered. Page five.
And which paragraph?
First paragraph, about seven lines, eight lines down.
Okay, so we're referring to a different location now. We're referring to a location that's closer to the freeway. And at that location, the background noise is higher because it's located closer to the one-on-one. But that description does not apply to the location adjacent to New Era.
But you can't state definitively that the noise, because, was not, the noise generated at these decibels, you cannot state definitively that they were New Era?
Yes, we can.
Were you there?
No.
Okay. Did you have a control?
I was there for a portion of the survey and our continuous noise measurement data shows, clearly shows, that these dyno events, which are distinctive and are clearly above the noise standard.
How do they, how are they distinctive? These are automobiles that are manufactured and have EPA and have California standards. And that is in an area where there is an enormous amount of vehicles. How can you differentiate between one vehicle noise and another vehicle noise?
The way the vehicle is tested, the revving of the engine, extremely high noise levels that are produced. If you'd like to play the wave files, we can show you that.
Well, what I, what I'm asking you is that, did you write this report?
Yes, I did.
Okay. And you put in here, "Doors likely open."
Yes.
So there was no visual observation of the building. There was just an item set up in the adjoining property.
It was an audio observation.
An audio observation from an instrument that was put up unmanned in an uncontrolled setting at another location, correct?
Controlled, from a secured instrument through a process of acoustical monitoring that the accuracy has been demonstrated for thousands and thousands of noise studies.
Okay, but I'm asking you, I'm asking you for this one. Was it under a controlled situation? Do you know whether or not a vehicle pulled into the parking lot and may have revved their engine?
Yes, we, we recorded those vehicles revving those engines and we eliminated them from table one and we put them into a different database.
But my question is, you did not see which vehicle was making that noise, did you?
Did not see, but I heard.
Are you aware that a normal vehi, a normal vehicle starts on a dry start at approximately seventy-five decibels?
At what distance?
At the distance adjacent from, from my building.
At what distance is that?
Okay.
Well, how far were you from my building?
I was at the property line.
I think we should keep the questions, one person asking the questions devolving a little bit.
Okay.
I'll get into all that.
Okay. Okay, I'll conclude there. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So now I will allow the city staff's counsel to redirect. The witness?
Yeah, short redirect, thank you. Two questions, Mr. Wu. One, are continuous noise measurements standard in the industry with respect to acoustical or noise testing?
They're standard, whether you elect to do them or not, that's up to the client and the consultant that's performing the work.
But they're accept, they're industry, accepted amongst, see, the industry?
Accepted amongst the industry. We do this for Caltrans, we do this for L.A. Metro, we do this for all our clients.
Understood. And last question. Does the fact that the doors were likely open or likely shut matter? Does it have any bearing on your results or is it simply a notation that you made that reflects what you heard in the noise recordings?
No, it, it does have a bearing. And it's demonstrated that when those doors are shut, the sound level is considerably lower.
Correct, but ultimately, the numbers are what the numbers are, correct?
Ultimately, the numbers are what the numbers are. And they are above the city's noise limit.
Thank you. No, no further questions of the witness. If I, if I may, I just would like to conclude my presentation.
Okay, we're not going to go to questions first? Okay, please continue.
Thank you. So, thank you, Mr. Wu. Following, following Mr. Wu's, the completion of his tests and our receipt of the results, on or about October fourteenth, the city sent Mr. Asparza correspondence, which is marked as exhibit eight, and you will find under the exhibit eight tab in your binder. And the correspondence is a notice of violation. And generally, the, the notice advised Mr. Asparza that his operation was resulting in noise in excess of that permitted by the city. It requested that he schedule an inspection to be attended by the city and an acoustical engineer of his choice, whereat he could demonstrate that his business operations fell within the city's noise standards. Unfortunately, Mr. Asparza failed to respond to the city's request or otherwise take action to mitigate the noise resulting from his dynamometer operation. So, you know, just to bring things full circle, you know, I think it's clear that New Era's dynamometer operation creates substantial noise that as measured and as reported by neighboring residents results in disturbances that consistently exceed the city's sixty-five decibel limit between the hours of seven a.m. and ten p.m. This is a clear violation of section nine three oh five, which is a legislatively declared public nuisance pursuant to Agora Hills Municipal Code twelve hundred. Pursuant to section sixty-eight nineteen B six, this is prima facie evidence that the noise constitutes an immediate threat or menace to the health or safety of the public, which is the finding that council needs to make in order to revoke the business license. And just to reiterate, what prima facie means is that council is required to accept as true the fact that the dynamometer operation constitutes an immediate threat. It's New Era's burden to affirmatively demonstrate that. And we also believe irrespective of whether it's prima facie or not, that the record evidence and the testimony of Mr. Wu, including the complaints received by the city and I'm assuming the neighbor testimony that you'll hear shortly during the public comment section, establishes that the dynamometer operation is an immediate threat or menace to public health and safety. And under these circumstances, staff respectfully requests that you adopt a resolution revoking New Era's business license. Thank you.
Thank you. Council members, are there any questions of staff at this time? You are encouraged to ask questions at this time and not during deliberations. Who would like to go first? Councilmember Anstead?
So I think I'll start with just asking the prosecution a couple of questions here. First, the biggest question I have is, how many different people filed complaints only in the last, since twenty-twenty-three or twenty-twenty-four? I don't want to know from two thousand eighteen and two thousand twenty-one. I just want to know in the last eighteen, let's say, last eighteen months, how many, how many different, I want to know the exact number of individuals that filed complaints. And I also would like to know whether those individuals were at the same location or were they at different locations?
I would have to defer to staff. With, I would note that with respect to, are you requesting number of individual complainants or, or number of complaints? The former.
Number of individual complainants.
Okay, I would.
And also whether they were from the same location or were they from a different location?
I will, I would defer to staff.
Denise Thomas, Community Development Director. There were, the complaints were received from two different locations from two separate business owners.
So a total of four individuals or a total of two individuals from two different locations?
It's unclear the number of individuals represented in each one of those businesses. I wouldn't be able to answer that. But the actual complaints that we received, there were two distinct complaints from two distinct locations.
Okay, all right, thank you. Appreciate that. Let's see. Okay, the evidence from the, the earlier report that hasn't been entered into evidence, I think I got to wait to ask questions about that later, I think, or do you want me to?
As, from the staff's perspective, one has nothing to do with the other. So I'm not aware of what they intend to do with their report. I don't have a copy of the report in front of me. So to the extent you would like to inquire of that, I would respectfully request that we do so after Mr. Asparza's completed his presentation.
Okay, thank you. So I think the next thing I want to ask is of Mr. Wu concerning some of the, of the testing. And specifically, I just wanted to ask you about the ambient noise level in location number one. Did you measure the ambient noise level while, while you were there on location?
It's part of the data file that we have. I know just from looking at in general, the background noise at the location N M one, it's in the low fifties.
Low fifties?
Yes.
But you measured it while you were there?
Yes, we measured it.
That's good to know. Let's see if one other question I had. I think that's, that's it for me for right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So regarding the notice of violation that was sent out on October fourteenth, I think this is directed toward, towards cities, our city staff. So the information that was presented that there was no response from New Era, is that correct?
That's correct.
So what was the, can we talk, what was the process of once this notice of violation was sent out? What does that look like? So the notice is sent out and we did not receive a response from New Era. What did that look like on the city's end with the response?
This case is treated the same as we treat every other case. If we give a deadline for compliance and compliance is not achieved, we look at what our options are based on our, our toolbox of enforcement tools. In this particular instance, because of, because of the repeated, the repeated reoccurring complaints that we were receiving, we referred it to the prosecutor.
Thank you. And was this the first notice of violation that had gone out?
For this date, yes.
Okay, thank you. And my, my next question is, has there been any communication with New Era regarding possible mediation efforts from this recent, since the notice of violation went out? I, I can speak to that. I've spoken with Mr. Asparza a few times, who indicated to me that he had spent a tremendous amount of money on the roll-down door that he installed and was unequivocal and quite clear about the fact that he was done spending money on this issue. And regarding spending mon, I understand spending money, but was there ever discussion about communication with neighboring businesses on agreed-upon hours that the machine could be run and? So I have floated a number of suggestions to Mr. Asparza, including operating at specific hours on specific days, advising his neighbors of when he intends to operate or giving them a heads up. A number of different options so that, you know, neigh, so that we can, you know, move past this, that the neighbors can get along and everyone can respect, you know, Mr. Asparza can respect the fact that these people need quiet and perhaps he can run his dynamometer in a way that does not disrupt their business operations. It's my understanding that no such agreement was able to be reached. And is it your understanding that the neighboring business would have been open to these possible mediation efforts? I, I can't speak to that. What I can say is I've met with the neighboring business owners and they're, they're quite reasonable. Mr. Asparza is also reasonable in my experience with him. I think we've just reached a, I think we're here in a situation that's been coming to a head for a number of years. And this is where unfortunately we're at. Thank you. That concludes my, my questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Anstead?
Mr. Wu, or is it, I apologize, is it Dr. Wu or Mr. Wu? Mr. Wu, can you talk again? And it relates to the question that Councilmember Anstead asked about the ambient noise. Can you talk again about, and you, you have already testified this, I just want to get a little bit more clear. How is it that you can distinguish between what's happening in, at the dyno shop and what's happening around outside?
So our survey is a continuous noise survey. We're, we're making a sample of the noise and recording it, and that sample rate is every second. So for the first couple of days of the measurements, we have forty-eight hours of continuous measurements. So that forty-eight hours includes events from the dyno testing. It has events of just engines revving in the parking lot. It has some aircraft overflights. It has vehicular traffic. It has some people talking. And what we do in our lab is we come in and we look at the data. We post-process the data by looking at it visually on screen to looking for high spots. And then we'll go to the high spots and we'll, anything above sixty-five decibels, and we'll listen. And the software allows us to pinpoint the time that it goes above the standard and below the standard. And we can distinguish, and what we did was we distinguished automotive events with engines revving first. And then when we got down, completed that first pass, then we looked for automotive, engine revving events with the dyno wine. It's very distinctive. And there are many automotive, automotive events that did not have the dyno wine. And we excluded that. So the data presented in table one, it's clearly reflective of those dyno events that we measured. And there are some events, maybe a couple, that occurred simultaneous to other noise events in the community. We excluded those events from the data. So we're extremely confident in what we present in table one.
That's fantastic. Can I just ask a follow-up to make sure that I'm understanding it? So you had a machine just continuously recording. So this is back to Chris's, I'm sorry, Councilmember Anstead's question about the ambient noise. And then your machine, you looked at the waves and when you saw waves that were indicative of a possible dyno event, you actually then physically listened to it to hear the, the difference in the sound?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Klein, do it.
Thank you. A lot of my questions have been asked by fellow councilmembers and Mr. Stewart. You'll bear with us when we, as we beat this horse to death on the, on the ambient noise. But again, to clarify, in, you, you, you claimed, Dr., Mr. Wu, that you did continuous recording. So that would be overnight also when the shop was closed?
Correct.
So can you help me find the number or give me your estimate of what the ambient noise is just from freeway overhead? Like just the average of when the shop could be closed? Like, is it around sixty, sixty-five? Is it not that high?
At night, we, we didn't process those hours looking for that data. We were focusing solely on the hours that the dyno shop was stated to be operating.
Okay.
But we know, looking at the data, that the amb- But we know, looking at the data, that the ambient during the daytime tended to be in the low 50s, 52.
Right, right, you said that, okay.
And then normally at night, that's going to drop down a little bit lower.
Okay.
About 48 to 50, based on the proximity to the highway.
So my next question then would be for staff, which is if the if the ambient noise is in the low 50s and our city our maximum is 65, is it the business owner, is it incumbent upon the business owner to 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 only have 15 decibels to deal with? Or, you know, I guess my question is, how is how responsible is he for the ambient noise that is kind of taking up the majority of of his decibel readings, if that makes sense?
Thank you. I'm happy to answer this question. And Mr. Wu, if I'm inartful, please correct me. The ambient noise ostensibly would drown out any noise created by the dyno that was under the ambient noise level. Or it wouldn't be noticeable.
Yeah.
So I'm not sure that the ambient noise is really germane insofar as the dyno is not making up any difference. It's it's over 65 from zero.
Yeah.
So ostensibly, to the extent ambient noise is excessive, the fact that we can hear the dyno means that it's much louder.
Understand.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, thank you. And then my only other question is, Mr. Wu, you you said that there was a fence in between your equipment and the business. And so am I correct in understanding that these readings, in your opinion, are about five decibels under reality because of that fence? Is that what I? Is that right?
Yeah, so if that fence was set there, the sound level would probably be approximately five decibels higher.
Yeah.
Than what we measured.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
Thank you. The fence was going to be my question. And I just have one other question. For the businesses that are the neighboring businesses, do they have any sound barriers between them and New Era?
Well, the barriers that I observed was the wood fence directly to the south. And I believe there is a perimeter wall to the east direction. But the magnitude of the noise coming from the dyno event is not shielding that noise enough to keep it below the noise standard.
Thank you very much. So this is a time for the business owner and it's and his.
That that was said? That they said that we did not contact them or reach out to them? Because I have every call log where I have called, left messages for Trinise Rose Bandy, who was the person who was assigned to this case.
Can you come to the because you're coming anyway, I believe?
I would just.
You can make that as part of your presentation.
Well, I just wanted to do that while we're addressing that.
Well, we're beginning your presentation, so you can start with.
Well, Mr. Esparza is going to make the presentation. But since I've been here every meeting trying to help to try to work this out, I have I called on November 15th, left a message, called on November 19th, left a message on her voicemail, December 16th. We even talked one time and I said before the call on the 15th, and I said, can we wait and discuss this after the Thanksgiving holidays? I don't want to interrupt anybody. And she said, yes, and we she would reach out to Eric and get his schedule. We continuously tried to call and set up a meeting so that we could come to a satisfactory result on this. I also called on. Sorry, my glasses are not. December 16th, January 10th, twice, finally received a call back after the third call on after I made two two more calls on the 14th, because that's when we got some information from one of the business owners. So I kind of made it urgent and finally received a call back. We have made every attempt to try to work something out so that this business can still be in operation after 10 years. And I'll submit on that. Okay.
Okay, sorry. Thank you. So I'm gonna have my presentation. Again, I only had two days to prepare for this. I I did not work Monday or Tuesday. I'm gonna go into quickly into the violation from October 14th that he mentioned. I did not say anything because we were here on October 23rd. And that is when I was going to present all my evidence that I was I will be presenting today. So I did not say anything because the sound company, the acoustic team, had already been to my shop. There was no need for me to hire another company when the money comes out of my pocket and not out of the the city funds. So I did not do anything about it, so I just wanted to talk about that. As far as contacting the city, as he mentioned, we tried contacting the city. We were trying after the case got dropped or the when we were here last, they they dropped everything. I tried contacting the city and again, we had no reply. So with that being said, I would like to present. I gave you guys pretty much exactly what I'm gonna say. There's nothing new. So I'll start off everything's under exhibit A, B, C, D, E, F, G, and H. So.
Sorry. Can you identify what those just read off what the?
Okay, yeah, not a problem. So exhibit A is the Vena Clausen and Associates report that was presented previously here. So I I still have that and I want to use that to provide some information regarding noise meter or noise readings from that report to the current report, which agreed it got done. I was at my shop and we'll go from there. Exhibit B are pictures of my dyno day from March 8, 9, 10, and 11, stating that I was not in town. Exhibit C is a receipt of a dyno purchase that I paid a particular amount of money, which I'll get into later, which it's not a problem, but, you know, I'll I'll say it when I I do the rest. Exhibit D is the acoustic report from the company that is here today, Mr. Mr. Wu. That's also in here, so we're both on the same page. Exhibit E is a photograph showing my shop from where the testing NM2 was made, clearly showing the view from my shop and how you can see every single door as it is a straight shot and there is nothing in the way. Exhibit F is the email from Mr. Eric Marcus, sending me the acoustic report dated only last Wednesday, which was the 15th. Exhibit G are is pictures from my Ring camera that state that I closed the door when I used the dyno meter. And then exhibit H is a California Vehicle Code, Section 27151, which is a code in the California law regarding exhaust noise. So if that's okay, I would like to continue.
You may proceed.
Okay.
I apologize for interrupting. I haven't been provided a copy of any of this evidence. Do you happen to have one, Mr. Esparza?
Most of the evidence was previously provided. The reports were.
The city clerk just handed me a copy.
Oh, okay, they gave it to.
This is a brand new proceeding just for the record. So that's why we need new exhibits. Thank you.
Has a copy been provided?
I only brought seven and I provide them early in the morning. Can somebody, sorry, I just, it was five and then six and then. Okay, so again, sorry, I I spent all day typing this out. Madam Mayor and council members, I am Alexander Esparza and I own New Era Performance Automotive Repair Shop. I have been appearing before you the last 10 months. If you recall, the first time we came, we were given the acoustic report on the day of the hearing, April 10th. We requested a continuance so we could review the documents prepared for Vena Clausen Associates, which you can find attached as exhibit A. If you guys want to take a quick look at exhibit A, if you go to the fourth or fifth, the last page on exhibit A, it's pretty much the readings from the Vena Clausen Associates report. This is a company that was hired by the city to go and monitor my shop. And as you guys can see, we'll go quickly over it. I'm not gonna go to I'm not gonna spend too much time on it. It shows that I operated at 84, 89, 85, 70, 78, 75, 80. Pretty much every single reading on this page shows that I was over. 100%, can't deny it. It shows it right there. I was over the readings and this was taken in March. Now. Hold on. Okay, May 8th, I appeared for the next council meeting after having time to review the acoustical report. We put together evidence to rebut the acoustical report. If you recall, we provided evidence that there was no way that my shop was made that noise that was reported. I provided data stamped photos showing the Bay Area. If you guys want to go to exhibit B, which is right after. I provided data stamped photos showing that the Bay Area where the dyno is located was empty. I also went so far as providing a copy of my airline ticket, a picture of the dyno shop closed, pictures of the flight confirmation email, and pictures of me in Dallas, Texas. You can find that in the next exhibit. It's just the Ring camera, 38, 39, 310, and 311. There's no activity on the Ring camera. There is a picture of me out of town on March 9th at a 50 year birthday party. And there's a confirmation email saying that I flew out of St. Louis, Vispo on the 10th. And then there is a ticket with the return flight from the 18th. That is all on exhibit B, which states that I was not in town. And the readings from the Vena Clausen report all stated I was over the noise limit, but my dyno was closed. This was because the shop was closed and there was no cars being worked on. Yet the city came and started this report and stated that this report was prima facie evidence that the shop was in violation of the City Agora Municipal Code. The city showed no evidence. Also remind you that the area where I have my shop is located prior right next to the freeway. In the Vena Clausen report, the city wanted to link this noise to New Era Performance. This report had reading has 89 dBs. And you can see that on exhibit A. So the highest was 89. The city did not make their case. Then they asked for a continuance and we agreed. We agreed to set up a dime for the city to come in and do testing. This was a recommendation of the city council and I was okay with it. As you guys recall, we agreed on sending another team to go back out while I was there. I accommodated the city and they eventually hired another company called Acoustics Group, Inc. July 10th, I was there for the meeting and the city asked for a continuance because they had not contacted me to set up a meeting with New Era Performance. So we came on the 10th and we couldn't do anything because they had not contacted me to set up this meeting. We agreed and showed that we were making an effort to reduce any noise. I had purchased an insulated garage door that is three inches thick of insulation that costed me $15,000. You can see the copy of the receipt on exhibit C. It states that it was installed 8/1/2024 for a total of $15,404 that I paid out of my pocket. September 11th, I came to the hearing and the city asked for a continuance. It appeared that the acoustical report was not ready. And again, here I was trying to finish and get this over with. The acoustical company had been had been to my shop two weeks prior on September 11th. No, sorry. Had been to my shop two weeks prior to September 11th on August 29th. And the representatives from Agora Hills came to the shop around 11:30. And we did three tests with Mr. Wu in front of my dyno to prove that the noise was under. The tests were 1202, 1203, and 1249. As stated, the door was closed. He was in front of my dyno and saw that the door was closed. The representative representative of the acoustical company was at my shop and heard the vehicle on the dyno. Everybody left and we were under the impression that the door had met the standards. It appeared as though the acoustical group ran additional uncontrolled testing after they left my shop. The readings at 1202 from table three exhibit D, if you guys would like to go to exhibit D, and I think it's five, six pages in, it says table three, noise events at NM2. You guys there? At 1202 from table three exhibit D, at this location across the shop, which is about 70 feet across, it recorded 70.8 decibels. You guys can go down over to 12.2 and it shows that we the decibels were 70.8. And at the location, it's only 15 feet away from a shop, which is the adjacent location. If you go back two pages, that would be NM1. As he stated, that is the location right next to my shop. The readings are also at 1202. And at 1202, I only made 63.4. This location is only 15 feet across. There is an adjacent walk right here and the location where the meters the meter was at was right next to it. And it it's actually seven decibels lower than the location is 70 feet away. At the same time, which only confirms that the reading the readings from the vehicle and the general noise is louder than the readings from the meter only a few feet from my dyno and are and are inaccurate to use as vehicle noise. Next, the company states that they do not know whether the dyno doors were open and took readings. I am providing a picture showing looking towards the shop. And if someone was actually there, they could see if the shop door was open or closed. Also, in the report of the acoustical groups, they clearly state that the only that they are only guessing by stating dyno doors likely open. They cannot stay with any specificity because the noise meter was left unmonitored. And for that reason, cannot be proven that the noise came from New Era Performance. If you guys would like to go to the next exhibit, which is exhibit E, this is one clear picture, as good as I could get with my phone, from this location NM2, where the noise readings were taken. You can clearly see at the end if my doors are open or closed, which states that there was nobody present when at this location. And they cannot confirm if my doors were open or closed. I listed a couple of times right here where it shows dyno doors likely open, everything here. But if if somebody was there, you would have been able to see that my doors are closed at all times. The report goes on to measure the engine exhaust exhaust noise and vehicle was when a vehicle was started, which would be table two on the previous exhibit. And if you look at like Mr. Francis mentioned, in the top paragraph, it it states, it cannot be confirmed that all these noise events are attributed to New Era Dyno operation. The report states that because the location is close to the Ventura Freeway, the background noise from the vehicular traffic tended to dominate this location and the noise from the dyno car exhaust were less noticeable. Now, if we go back to the Vena Clausen report exhibit A, which was already established that the noise was not from New Era Performance Dyno testing testing because the shop was closed. This report showed that the noise was well above 65 decibels at all times of the day. And you guys can clearly see that it never went under, even though I was not even in town that weekend. This report shows the dates between 38 and 311. In this report, there was not one day the noise level was below. These two reports are almost identical in readings. If 65 dBs is the city noise standard, no one can meet these noise requirements in the general area when a regular report is stating that the general noise is much higher. The acoustic report stated that the reading from 28205 Agora Road in table one is right next to the highly traveled Agora Road. This was also addressed. This was also the address used for the Vena Clausen report and showed that the noise ranged between 69 and 89 while New Era was closed. On October 23rd, we had another meeting. And I just want to note for the record that I've been trying to cooperate with the city as much as possible. The city had asked for me the asked for the matter to be continued. If the city, if the council remembers, the city stated that they are no longer seeking to revoke New Era Performance. So last time we were here, you you guys remember that they that they said that weren't gonna revoke my license. When the council asked for a reason, the prosecutor said that they could not comment at the time. Outside of the council meeting, we met with the city prosecutor and discussed setting up a meeting with Mr. Stewart, Mr. Marcus, and the city code person, Ms. Trinise Bandy. We reached out to Ms. Bandy in November to set up an appointment to meet, called the city November 15th, November 19th. We called on the 19th and spoke to Ms. Bandy and explained that explained that we spoke to Eric and it was suggested that we all meet to try to try to work out the noise issue since I assumed that the case to revoke my license had been dropped and I still wanted to make sure I was in good terms with the city and tried to still come to a resolution where everyone's needs were met. Ms. Bandy was to reach out to Mr. Marcus and coordinate with his schedule and we would meet up set up a meeting. This never happened. We called after Thanksgiving holiday on December 16th and left a message. January 10th called and left another message. January 14th called and left two messages, finally receiving a call back from Ms. Bandy at 5:13 PM. The reason we called several times was because Danny of Danny Automotives that share an automotive address with me received a notice in the mail about an upcoming hearing to our surprise. New Era did not receive any notice in the mail. We asked that we asked what was going on. We asked that, we asked what was going on and why there had been no meeting set up. And we did not receive notice of the hearing. We were told that they would need to, that we would need to speak to Mr. Marcus. I contacted Mr. Marcus and we sent an email with the Acoustic Group Report on, uh, we were sent an email from the Acoustic Group Report on January fifteenth. This report has been completed since September twenty-sixth. This did not give us proper notice. You can see the email that he sent me on Exhibit F pretty much states that attached is a, uh, a report that we will be presenting here today. I then received in a letter addressed from the City of Agora Hills. Date and stamp, January seventeenth. I received this letter in the mail on Saturday, the eighteenth. The letter had a copy of an email that had been sent to an email that has not been in use by my business for some time and is not my primary contact email for my business. And we are here today. This is the second time that the city has not given me any time to prepare. The first time I received the report and I was driving to the meeting. This time I received a letter notifying me of the hearing, January eighteenth, only few days prior to today. Because of this delay, I was not able to receive, retrieve videos from my cameras on these specific dates since they no longer are stored and it's been over three months. Therefore, I cannot confirm whether the times listed had vehicles on the dyno. This delay has caused me to not be able to present all the rebuttal evidence. I am trying to save my business that has been in the city approaching ten years. In both reports, it clearly states that the noise from this area is higher than the sixty-five dBs at all times when my shop is closed and I am not in town. I have provided pictures of my dyno bay after the new door was installed. All pictures are from previous months and different times of the day showing that after I installed my dyno bay door, I always maintain it closed while I have vehicles on the dyno bay. You guys go on to the next Exhibit, Exhibit G. I attached four pictures, different times, different months, uh, going as far back as I could go with the two-day notice that I have, which was, uh, we have, uh, about November twenty-sixth, December tenth, January thirteenth, and December twentieth. Those pictures show clearly in my Ring Camera that the door is closed while I have a vehicle on the dyno. There are several automotive businesses in the immediate area. Danny's Automotive, that is an auto repair shop in the same complex. The shop works on vehicles all day, every day, excluding weekends. Achy Braky, the tire man that's across the street that changes tires all day. All businesses are in the proper zoning for the type of work we do. In order to change the tire, an impact driver is used to remove the lug nuts from the wheels. Now, to give you guys an example, I brought an impact gun that is used to remove lug nuts from car wheels. I would like to make a quick presentation of what it sounds like for other businesses in my area that work on cars, if that's okay with you guys.
We have no objection.
This is the type of noise that gets done on all the shops around where I'm at.
Counsel, may I? I've been withholding all of my objections until the conclusion of his presentation. Would you like me to make them? Is that okay? Or would you prefer I make them as we, as we move forward?
You need to make the objection as we go along when you deem appropriate.
Okey dokey. May I make some objections? Well, initially, I would object to all testimony, uh, with respect to the Veneclausian Report. It's wholly irrelevant, which is the basis for excluding evidence from this proceeding. That would include not only Mr. Asparza's testimony, but Exhibits A. Um, I would also move to exclude as irrelevant Exhibit B insofar as photographs of his dyno in March twenty-two-four have no bearing on the issues presented today. Yes, those would be the basis of my objections. I would also object to Mr. Asparza's use of an impact driver, uh, at this proceeding as it has no bearing whatsoever on the noise generated by his dynamometer, um, nor his compliance with the city's code.
And I think that noise in general, not from my dyno, is the problem here. It's noise in general. And this is noise that gets done on shops around my area in general. So I think that the noise that you're having a problem with is vehicle noise, which should not matter whether it's vehicle noise, impact noise, dog's barking noise. It is, every, every single type of noise is, that exceeds sixty-five dBs is the problem, not just vehicle noise.
I can't speak to whether other noises exceed sixty-five dBs because, um, for purposes of our, uh, study, we eliminated all other noise except the dyno noise, uh, from our analysis. Uh, the dyno noise is what we're here to discuss. And according to our study, the dyno noise exceeds the threshold. Whether the noise generated by an impact wrench or, uh, screeching tires does is wholly irrelevant.
Okay, I would like to confer with my fellow council members for input on the decision. Yeah, two things. First, the report, because we're not discussing that this evening. Do you feel that we will sustain the objection on submitting the report, the previous report? What do you want to include? Please discuss.
I, I would have a question about that. Can I get clarification on something before I decide? Can someone over there explain to me whether the earlier report is apples to apples? I mean, I know that we're, we're, um, measuring decibels. But do we, you know, when Mr. Wu was talking about his technology and how he can pinpoint, uh, the dyno, are, how, how do we compare that other report to this?
The other report, um, has had no impact on Mr. Wu's, uh, testing.
I'm asking about like methodology. Do we know what this, is the methodology similar?
The previous report reflects noise readings taken. I don't know if it was with the same machine. Um, but they, it does reflect noise readings. Um, although obviously we're not relying on that report. We are not, uh, presenting the testimony of anyone affiliated with the drafter of that report. It, it simply has nothing to do with what we're talking about today.
No, I don't think so. Cause I, we get, we get, I understand why you want to submit the report very clearly. No, 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 I, I understand that. Um, I'm just. I'm, I'm just curious if it's apples to apples in terms of analysis of the machine that we're trying to pinpoint.
No, it's not apples to apples insofar as the last report did not. Are, are you referring to the machine that used to record the sounds or are you using to the dyno machine?
The dyno.
The last report did not measure the dyno. So it has no bearing on this report.
Right, I understand. But my question is, is it, is the methodology of that, um, first report the same methodology of being able to pick up on?
I think I understand.
Out, the, the exceptions to the ambient noise.
I think I understand your question. And no, the methodology was different. Because the, the, uh, drafter of the earlier report did not listen to the wave files to confirm that the noise levels he was hearing were attributable to a specific cause. There was no vetting done of the numbers. And in this instance, any number that appears on that chart is supported by Mr. Wu listening to the recording reflecting that, that reading and confirming one hundred percent that it is attributed to the dyno and nothing else.
Hundred percent. You're, you're with a hundred percent certainty.
I would defer to Mr. Wu.
Counsel member Anderson?
Yes. So I very much appreciate Councilmember Klein Lopez's question. And I, I share some of those, those questions and appreciate you lifting it up. My preference would be to not sustain the objection and to allow this in. And then we can just weigh the apples to apples question as part of our deliberations. But my preference would be to, to go ahead and have that be part of our considerations.
Should we take a roll call on that or, or are you comfortable with it?
I agree. I agree. I think deferential to the fact that we're looking at taking away the business license. I think that we should allow the report in. The other thing is the prosecution actually introduced that report originally and alleged that the dynameter made that noise in the original allegations. And it was, uh, the business owner that refuted it and showed that he wasn't here when that was, when that was done.
Okay, so we will allow the Veneclaus and Associates' report. What was your second objection?
To Exhibit B, the photographs of the dyno on days having no bearing to the testing that we're discussing here and no bearing on the basis of the city's revocation request?
I feel like we went through that last time. Like we accepted that evidence. And so it's just a repeat of evidence we've already seen and accepted. So I have no problem accepting that again.
So we'll overrule?
We, we, we already talked about this one and, and I believed and I thought the rest of the council believed that Mr. Asparza was not in town that weekend. So to me, there's no harm in seeing that again.
Okay.
Okay. All right.
I think there's one more. I, I think he was also objecting to the.
Objecting to the test.
To the thing, the items that Mr. Asparza just brought in.
How, how does council members feel about listening to this noise?
I, I would note that to the extent Mr. Asparza wants to, uh, generate audio for you all to listen to, that, that the city and staff have not received any notice of, it would only seem appropriate that staff or that council receives into evidence the wave recordings that I have prepared, which will clearly establish the sound of a dyno versus the sound of an engine.
I agree. So we sustain that objection.
So I would say it's up to Mr. Asparza whether he wants to admit both as evidence or neither.
Neither. Okay, good. Thank you, everybody.
Just wanted to state. All right, so I will continue. The, the Acoustic Group could not determine the source of the noise because it is situated close to Ventura Freeway. The background noise from the freeway and the motor vehicles dominated this location. With all that being said, I would like to finish by bringing to the council members' attention Exhibit H. Now, before I, before I read this off, I just want to ask, do any of our council, uh, members own a V-eight Camaro, Corvette, Audi, BMW, Lamborghini? No? Jesus.
I, I did years ago, but not now.
And, okay, well, um, there is a law to regulate and that regulates and governs vehicle exhaust noise under Section Code Two Seven One Five One. I took a picture of it and I posted it right here. Pretty much is the California law for vehicle noise. It states that if a vehicle with the manufacturing gross weight of six thousand pounds can have an exhaust sound level up to ninety-five dBs. Therefore, under the California state law, we are not in violation and no one can meet sixty-five dB standards. The City of Agora Hills wants to revoke my license when I am in compliance with California state law. Under the Vehicle Code, the State of California allows exhaust noise up to ninety-five. If Agora Hills Municipal Code Ninety-three Oh Five caps noise readings at sixty-five, it is in direct conflict with the state law. In addition, since California Vehicle allows vehicle exhaust to be as high as ninety-five dBs, there cannot be a violation of the health, zoning, fire, or safety of the public. And you guys can read that on the last page. And this is a California law, which states that vehicles can be up to ninety-five. Out the law, brand new, and it's legal to have them all the way up to ninety-five. And, uh, I, I think that concludes my presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So. Okay, do you wish to call any witnesses?
I, I'm not trying to call witnesses, but I do have people from adjacent, uh, buildings to mine that are here. Uh, I don't know if that would be a witness or just a public speaker.
If I may.
One moment. So if you want to ask questions of your witnesses, then you would call them as witnesses. They would take an oath. Actually, everyone's going to be taking an oath. If you're not going to ask, actually be asking questions of them, um, they're just going to be providing general comments to the council. And they'll come forward during public comment period. So it's up to you. If you want to take a few minutes recess to figure it out, we could also do that.
Yeah, can you just?
Yeah, I think we'd all appreciate a five minutes. Thank you. All right, we're going to continue. Did you decide if you-
Yes, I have decided and all I'm going to do is, there's three local businesses adjacent to my location. I'm going to simply call them up or refer to them, and I just want them to give the opinion of my shop and my noise. That's all I'm asking.
I think we have to, um, City Clerk, do I refer to you before they speak?
I'm sorry. Are you going to ask them questions?
I mean-
Or they're just going to-
I'm going to ask a simple, I'm just going to ask a simple, there's no one to introduce me.
You are going to ask questions. Yeah, I don't need to know what you're going to ask them.
Right.
If you're going to ask them, okay.
And I would assume that I have the right to cross-examine?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay.
So we will have the administration of the oath, thank you. So will we just do it for all at once then? Yeah. So anyone that's going to be testifying, if you'd please stand and raise your right hand?
Yeah, isn't there one just outside the door? Where is it? Oh, is that door open to the- Thank you.
So, yeah, so it'll be these three gentlemen right here.
Okay.
And Ms. City Clerk, once you take their oath, you can confirm what their names are. Have them stand it, so you have it and it matches up with their name. For the record, thank you. Please stand and raise your right hand. Do you solemnly state that the evidence you shall give in this matter shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Thank you. And when you come up, if I could, even if it's just writing it down on a piece of paper, if I could have your name, so we can add it to the record. It can be after your testimony.
They all submitted the public speaking paperwork when they came in.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, you have to leave, right?
Yeah.
Okay, we're just going to go with-
Could you please speak into the mic?
I'm going to start off with Mr. Stacy. He is the owner of the dog rescue behind my dyno in the adjacent property behind it. Eastwood Ranch Foundation.
I'm sorry, what is his full name?
Stacy Poitres.
You can speak into the mic.
My name is Stacy Poitres.
Thank you.
Mr. Stacy, can you state, in the years you've been with the business, obviously it just opened up two years ago, right?
Right.
How often do you hear my vehicles, my dyno noise?
I haven't heard anything from your shop.
Okay. How many times do you hear cars passing by on the street with loud engines?
Could you please speak into the mic when you-
I hear cars, Dorothy is kind of like a straightaway, so the kids will go down there and peel out with their cars and has nothing to do with him and that's all I hear. The highway is the big deal. That's what you really hear.
Okay, he has to go, so that's all I have for him, if you guys want to cross-examine him.
I have no questions. His witness.
Okay, thank you. You may leave if you need to go.
Next, hello. Next on, we're going to go to Danny. Danny Automotive is the shop in the same location where I have my business, and I'm simply just going to ask him what he has to say about my business. Simple as that. He's known me for 10 years since I moved into the location, and I just want to ask him about the dyno noise and what he thinks and just give us your honest opinion.
Well, I've had my business for 38 years, same place. When he first started, it was very loud. He made the corrections to the room, they changed it tremendously. I mean, I can talk in my office, not here, not to get disturbed by any of the noise. I don't know what the complaint's all about. They did make the corrections to it, you know, it's fine, and I'm right next door to him, so the person that should be complaining should be me. He's fixed what he has to fix, it's good. I mean, there's no, I mean, it's, you can hear it, but very minute. It's not a big deal, you know, and I'll talk with my customers and so forth, it doesn't interfere with that, so.
Thank you. Do you have any cross?
No questions.
Thank you.
Pardon me, is it Danny? Could you state your name for the, could you state your name for the record? I don't have a-
Yeah, Danny Criaca, C-R-I-C-A.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, and lastly, in front of my dyno, there's a concrete business, and we have people that go in and out every day, which we have here Garrett Petrula, that will, same thing, I just want to confirm, I just want to ask him, since I've been in the dyno, since I've been working here, you know, what has he noticed as far as the change in my shop since all these changes were made to try to reduce and comply with the city?
Hey, I'm Garrett Petrula, and I think that ever since he made the changes, I don't have any problems either. I'm the manager for Precision Concrete Cutting, and I'm on the phone all day calling customers and I don't have a single issue. I have two offices, actually. One is right on the corner at 28210, I believe, and then I have 28230 as well, and I don't have a single complaint about any noise coming out of that shop. Just today, there was Porsches racing down the street, so, I mean, I don't know how they can say that their noise from the dyno is different than the Porsche that was just racing down the street, but to me, like, that's the bigger issue, is the racing on the street than what he's doing in his shop.
Do you have any cross-examination?
One question. You indicated that the noise generated by the Porsches racing down the street would probably make it difficult for us to pinpoint his dynamometer noise. Have you heard Mr. Sparza operate his dynamometer in the past?
Yes, I have.
And does that have a, does the dynamometer, when it's being operated, produce a distinct whining sound?
It does, yes.
And is that distinct whine different than the sound two Porsches make when they're racing down the street? Do those Porsches exhibit that same whine?
They exhibit much louder noise than the whine.
But not a whine, correct?
I mean, they can if they have a turbo in there.
Fair enough. Would you be able to distinguish between the two Porsches driving down the street and the dynamometer operation where you'd hear the two?
No, not if you had a turbo in it.
Okay, thank you. No further questions.
And that concludes my witnesses.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, did you have any redirect for any of your witnesses? Did you want to ask them anything more based on what Mr. Marcus?
No, I honestly don't have anything else. I just wanted to prove that I took the measures needed. I lowered the noise decibels. The two reports show almost identical readings, one when I'm not at the shop and one when I'm at the shop, so I just want all this to be over and I just want to tell people that the noises being monitored are the same noise that gets monitored even when I'm out of town and to stop pinpointing my shop and just let me work and get back to work, that's all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now, this is the time for any members of the public who wish to speak before the council. If you do speak, you will be required to take an oath. Madam City Clerk, are there any members of the public here to speak on this item?
Yes, we do have speaker cards.
Did I miss something?
I think whether there are questions, council questions for the business owner and any of their witnesses.
Oh. Sorry, that wasn't here.
Yep.
All right, just before we proceed with the public speaker, sorry to keep you even longer. Does any council members have any questions? Councilmember Anstead.
Mr. Sparza, I definitely, like you said, that we've been going through this quite a bit. For those of us that have been on the council, we've definitely very familiar with this, and so I have the biggest question I have, I know that you went through and you've shown us the receipt to try to modify with the door. So the question I have for you, and again, I want to make sure that you're under oath, and I want to make sure that you answer this question truthfully, is how many, how often would you say that you operate the dyno with the door open? Would you say it's 50% of the time, 10% of the time, zero? Give me an estimate of what you think you operate it realistically, so we have an idea.
Yes, not a problem. I operate the dyno open when I know that the vehicle is a stock, quiet vehicle that has not had any performance upgrades done in order to maintain, because I know that the vehicle is quiet, and I don't close the door. I would say, being in the business I am, 10%.
Okay, I appreciate you answering that. Okay, the second question I have is, if the council, and I have no idea what anybody's thoughts are right now, and I haven't made up my mind yet, but if the council was to try to come up with some type of solution to buy both you and to try to still let you operate the business, would you be willing to have some restrictions put on your business, or do you want us to vote up or down whether you have a license or not?
100%. As I stated last time I was here, I said I would work with the two businesses that keep calling to work on a schedule where if they have something to do, just give me a heads up. I can move my dyno appointments, and I have no problem doing so, but last time I tried doing that, I was told off, so, but I am willing to work with the businesses, if needed, to modify my schedule in accordance to their schedule, but I'll say it right now, I'm not going to be quiet from 8 to 5 because they're in business. I have to work.
So, let me ask you, because it's going to have to be more formal than what you're talking about. I mean, again, this is from my-
Correct.
I'm only talking for myself here. What is your willingness to limit your operation of the dyno? Would you be willing to limit it to one day a week, to two days a week, to, give me your, you got to give us some idea?
No problem. I already gave thought of all this, and there is seven days in the week. I work Saturdays and I sometimes work Sundays, so I would like to have four days of the week in order to get it done, not including Sundays, obviously, but if Saturday is an option, I would take Saturday and three more days of the week, and we can set certain particular hours. I'm willing to work with everybody, but I would like to, you know, try to come to an agreement, but I am okay with, you know, maybe one yes day, one day no type of deal, and I can fully modify my schedule. Again, I only do three maximum cars a day, so it's not like you hear this from 8:00 in the morning to midnight. You hear it usually 11, 1, and 3 are my standard operation hours for the dyno.
Thank you for answering those questions. I think I have one, actually, and I wanted to ask the mayor or the legal counsel, if I have one question back to the prosecutor, can I ask that question?
There's going to be a final round of questions at the end before we close everything, so I think this time we should probably just reserve it for Mr. Sparza and his team.
You got it. I'm finished then. Thank you very much.
No problem, thank you.
Do we have any questions? Councilmember Klein-Lopet?
Thank you, just a couple of questions. On Exhibit E, the picture of your-
On Exhibit E, the picture of your shop, are you the far right?
If it's the picture of my doors, no. I am, the far right is Danny's, the far left is my shop, which would be closest to the wall adjacent to the location where the left.
So who's this?
Your dyno is this door, and where is Danny's? Danny's is from here over.
Okay. Okay. Understood. So you're the furthest back.
I'm the farthest back.
Okay.
Which is adjacent to the wall.
And it's one garage, and it's that one with the door open?
Correct.
Okay. And the complaints, you can go back to the mic. The complaints are coming from?
The location, the walls right around that distance, the location behind it. Correct.
Like here?
Yes.
They're kind of facing your open door, if it's open?
No, they're, we're both facing the same direction. They're just on the opposite side of the wall.
So they're kind of the same situation as Danny? Like, just on the other side?
Correct. Just on the other side is Danny.
Okay. Okay. And then my next question is, can you clarify the statement you made about, I think you said, I don't remember what date it was, but you said that Mr. Wu and city staff came to your place and did readings, and those readings, that you altogether showed up on one of these?
Correct. August 29th, we had the city, Mr. Eric and Mr. Wu meet at my shop to do recordings. I was there, and they, these recordings, they were there in person, not just left in un-metered sound recording. They were there in person and proceeded to record when I was making a test on the dyno with the vehicle. And those are the three, the three times we listed on here, 1202, 1203, and 1249. They were there at my shop, and those are the readings. And as you can see, dyno closed because the dyno was closed, and they know it was closed because they were right in front of it.
Okay. And they did not do a test at that time of the sound with the door open?
No, they did not do a test with the sound with the door open.
Okay. Okay. Those are my questions.
So just to follow up on Councilmember Klein Lopez, at 8:20, on 8:29 at 1202, with the door closed, was 69.2 and 70.8. Is that correct? So they both exceeded the 65?
No. On 8:29 at 1202, 1203, and 1249, you can find that on.
Am I looking at the wrong?
It's Table 1.
Table 1, okay. You're saying they were 63.2 and 63.4?
Hold on. Correct. Table 1, which is at the location next to me, 63.2, 60, and 50, 4.8, or if you look at the Mac, 63, 60, and 57.9. And then that is the only time it states that the dyno doors were closed, and that is because they were there in person and saw the closed doors. Everything else says likely open, and the readings are much higher.
Okay. So then, why do I have in Table 3 at 1202, which is two pages after?
Correct.
The same time, 1202, and they're highest, and the door's closed.
That was actually at the other location in front of my shop, which is about 70 feet away. That is the offices two buildings down. We have the concrete right next to me, and then we have the offices, which is the picture I provided that you, we just referred to. That is a location at that location, which I had stated that this time, at a location much further, is much louder, or three decibels louder than the location adjacent to my shop, and cannot be proven to be engine noise, because it clearly states that it's louder further away than it is right next to my shop at the same time.
So could that be because the noise amplifies with the surrounding cement wall and everything?
I don't think noise amplifies going through cement walls.
You're not going through, but bouncing off. I mean, you've got a cement wall there. I'm just trying to.
No, correct.
Why the sound is louder.
Well, I would like to, I would like to know that, too. The location on NM2, which is louder, is 70 feet away from me. The location of NM1, which is only 15 feet away from me, is quieter. What I'm, my point was to try to state that the noise readings claiming it was a dyno is not true, because the closer location would have been louder. I was trying to state that these readings were false, and since nobody was there monitoring, you cannot, you know, you cannot try to prove that this is my dyno.
So that would be a question I would have for the prosecutor.
Right. For final.
Okay. Thank you.
No problem.
Okay. So now, may I move to, all right, thank you. You may take a seat. So this is a time for any members of the public to speak before the council. If you do speak, you will be required to take an oath. Madam City Clerk, are there any members of the public here to speak on this item?
We do have speaker cards. So if I call your name, if you'd go ahead and stand, because we'll do the oath all at the same time. Diane Ricci, Jay DiMaggio, Maria DiMaggio, Joe Vannelli, Stacy Portress, did you want to speak again? He's still here? No. Francis Stewart?
I pulled that out. I have a question.
Thank you. Garrett Petrula?
I have a question.
Okay, great. So we'll remove those. Thank you. If you'd please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly state that the evidence you shall give in this matter shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God? Thank you. We'll call up our first speaker, which is Diane Ricci, and she did have some handouts that I'll pass to the council.
Thank you. So public testimony is limited to three minutes per speaker, and a speaker's time may not be transferred to another speaker. Persons addressing the city council shall not engage in disorderly conduct that disrupts or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of the meeting. I will now defer to the city clerk.
Sorry, Diane Ricci?
Okay.
And you have three minutes to speak, and you'll see a red light appear on the podium when your time is up, and there'll be a yellow light before that at the one minute.
Ms. Ricci, if you go ahead and adjust the microphone, I see you're on tippy toe. You can just pull the microphone down?
Pull it out. Okay. Right. Okay, great. Can you hear me now? Testing one, two. Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council. So my husband and I, we bought our building in Agora in 1985. I know some people are saying, well, let's only go back three years or two years or whatever. But I have been complaining, and I have a list, and it's in my file, since April of 2016, 2016. And this has been going on forever. Now, if you're gonna ask me, do I complain every day? No. I work 60 hours a week. I work Saturdays, I work Sundays. I'm in the music business, and Madam Mayor, your husband is also in the same business. We work 24/7. So to ask me to limit what I do, when I do it, I work with artists. Most of them are touring artists, like REO Speedwagon, a lot of other artists. I can't tell them I can only work at a certain time. It doesn't work in my business. And like I said, we bought our building in 1985. We have many artists come in constantly, and they're constantly complaining because, like I wrote myself notes, often they're out in the courtyard or in the lobby, either having a business meeting, finalizing lyrics, and then all of a sudden, they have to stop because it is a particular sound. That dyno sound is something that's so harsh, and just, it just, you just mentally stop. That's what happens. So if you're in a path, trying to come up with a lyric, you're gonna stop because all of a sudden, it just blocks you from even breathing. It even affects you physically. I'm telling you, it really does. So, and I just want you, Chris, to know that it's not how many people, in my building alone, we have one, two, three, we have three offices upstairs, a recording studio downstairs. That's four offices. That would be most probably four to five people just in my building alone that are impacted. In Maria's building, just as many people are impacted, every day, every day. So I just want you to know that. And, you know, I have artists that are, you know, Kevin Cronin, REO Speedwagon, Richard Marx, they were just writing a song just not that long ago. Melissa Manchester. I mean, these are big artists, and I have to apologize constantly for the noise. And it's just so upsetting that they have to stop what they're doing because of this noise. I bought my building in 1985. I should have some respect. I'm just asking, please, please consider us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions of this? Yes.
Thank you so much. My only question is, did you notice any difference after Mr. Sparza installed the door? Because I'm sure he's still doing tests, maybe with the door open, maybe with the door closed. Did you notice a difference?
So I'll just tell you, and I have.
If you can talk in the mic so that it can be.
I do have some readouts that sometimes, you know, it goes up to 120 dB. I mean, the dB levels, if I just use my app, is over the top. So maybe now, it's down to 100 dB. But still, if you're on a Zoom, or if people are downstairs trying to have a conversation, we cannot do that. We cannot have a conversation. We cannot, I have to make sure that I mute every time I'm on a Zoom call, every time. So don't ask me at what time specifically, which is what happened to me last time I was here, well, when exactly were you on a Zoom? I don't know. I work 60 hours.
No, I wasn't asking that. I was asking if you noticed a difference after he installed the door?
Right. I segwayed to my last meeting here. Sorry. Yes, but it's not enough.
And you're sure that the sound you're hearing, because it's so specific, is a dyno?
Yes, because it's very specific. My office is like right there, and we have letters from the other people in my building. His office is C, which is, his office is basically on the second floor overlooking the dyno, so his office is really loud, and he has to stop, and he's all, my whole building, we only do music. He has to stop recording until it's over.
And how many times a day do you?
Too many, too many times.
Is it more than two or three?
Too many times for my blood pressure to constantly go up.
Okay.
I am upset constantly. I'm swearing constantly. You don't want to be close to me when that's happening, because you'll be embarrassed by what comes out of my mouth, because I get so angry. So it affects me. It impacts my life. I'm 73 years old, but I work 60 hours a week, and he knows. I'm there Sundays, I'm there Saturdays, and I know he is, too. He works just as hard as I do, and I have to give him that. But I'm asking him, please just move down the street. We have a recording studio. That's what we do. We have musicians, we have famous people come in and want that privacy.
And the ambient noise of the freeway and the streets?
None of that, none of that impacts us. For some reason, I don't know why, it's a particular sound that that dyno makes that just impacts us. It just blocks us, it's as if all of a sudden, I just freeze, and I can't, I can't even think. I can't even explain to you. You'd have to come and work in my office one day and get that feeling.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Councilmembers, no?
Our next speaker is Jay.
No, no, hold on. Did anybody else have a question? No?
All right. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jay DiMaggio.
My name is Jay DiMaggio. There's, there's a couple of things that I was very confused in the building code or in the zoning ordinance. Typically, the zoning ordinance I've been involved with in constructing or developing, they typically talk dB to the property line or dB to a certain point. But I think that's a big gap in the code, that it doesn't tell you where you're measuring from. I think the gentleman over here, I think he measured from the property line, but he also measured in front of the door. But where's the 65 dB from? I have that question. I think that's something that should absolutely be considered. When we were building Maria's building, which is about 45, 50 feet above, where this gentleman's place of businesses, we had heavy machinery on the site, and I could hear, as well as the contractors could hear, the, that engine revving. And they were just blown away, because everyone's interested, like, what kind of car is down there? Like, I want to go see what kind of car is down there that can make that kind of noise. It was disturbing then. I actually consulted with an acoustician in California, Charles Salter, very good friend of mine. He told me, he said, if you want to mitigate what I'm hearing, he actually had me just download a simple app. He said, if it's within 20 dB of that, 20 dB of variance, he said, it's right there. And I was measuring over 100 dB up at Maria's, and that's higher. That's 45 feet higher than where his place of businesses is. Unfortunately, his place of business is surrounded by concrete walls, which is absolutely the worst thing for acoustics, because it bounces, it gets louder and louder and louder and louder. Unfortunately, that's one of the things that's happening. So it's being exacerbated. But we did, we spent over $100,000, easily over $100,000, reinforcing the north wall and the west wall of the building to STC 45, which is a sound measurement, maybe Mr. Wu can explain that more in detail. Basically, at that point, he said, you might as well rebuild your whole building. He said, because nothing, nothing is going to mitigate that kind of sound that you can put in there. I will say that I have not heard the door down. I will tell you, I have a little bit of background in this, and I will say that three inches of, a three-inch, a door that's three inches with three inches of insulation is not going to provide the STC rating knocked down. What's probably coming out of there is probably about 100, easily 100 dB coming off that machine. Just not going to knock it down. So I, I know he spent a lot of money. We spent about five or six to seven X of what he spent. The building still vibrates because of the frequency, because there is a low frequency to engines, it just is what it is. And the other thing is that there's, there's really no way that we can further mitigate. Well, we spent money because of that situation. What we were told, and I'll just end with this, what we were told, because I brought this up to Doug Hooper during entitlements, he said, has that been an issue? And this was before entitlements were even completed. And he said, that issue has been going on for at least four years. I said, what is happening? He said, absolutely nothing.
All right. Thank you. Questions?
Mr. DiMaggio, can you tell me, how about the other, the automotive businesses that are right in that, in those buildings? The other business, those other automotive businesses don't bother you or didn't bother you before?
You know, let me just tell you, I don't work in the building. It's my wife's business. No, they don't. I mean, it's a much different level of frequency than a dyno machine. I knew what a dyno machine was, but unfortunately, it's everything working against that machine of where that machine is actually located, down in that, kind of that well. The other equipment, I mean, I'm gonna be honest with you, I've never heard dogs bark from my wife's parking lot or her building. I have never, ever heard Tireman, and I go to Tireman, you know, to get my, I mean, that's where I go with all of our cars. So I have never heard any of that. I absolutely know what ambient noise is when it comes from freeway noise, and I will tell you definitely from Dorothy, you're hearing all freeway noise. You'll never hear that dyno machine, you will hear all freeway noise, because I've stood there.
Thank you. That's the only question.
Councilmember Wu? No. Councilmember Klein Lopez?
Can you just tell me, again, where exactly is the building in relation? I'm just.
It's southeast. Southeast.
It is south.
28127. 28127 Agora Road. It's a single-story-
Okay.
Stone-clad.
Okay, thank you. I'm just trying to, I'm looking at a map and trying to put all the pieces together.
Yeah. And I think one, one thing you should notice is that there's an elevation difference, which at that elevation difference, we shouldn't hear anything from our west building.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I see it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker?
Our next speaker is Maria DiMaggio.
Testing, is that a good place? Great. Okay, so our building is 28127 Agora Road. We are southeast of the business owner in question, whose business is creating the noise ordinance. So to be precise, it's three lots over and one lot down. Okay, so there's an empty lot next to me, there's a barber next to that, there's the recording studio, and then there's the shop in question behind that. So I'm quite a ways, and I wish you would have heard the video, because you would have been able to hear the distinct sound that comes from this business owner. There is no question that is a sound that is nothing that's coming off of the freeway or coming from Agora Road. There is no question what that sound is like. And it gets to the point where we all start to kind of panic when we hear it coming, because it's almost like it starts, it continues, it peaks, climax, and comes down. And if you have a headache, by the end of that, you have a migraine. The anticipation of it coming back, knowing when it's next, is nerve-wracking. Can I make this phone call? Should I wait till that's over? Can I conduct my own business? Because I'm worried about the sound that's coming through. Where I sit is the most east part of my building. I'm the farthest away from it. I'm on the phone with clients, and they can hear the sound. And I'm apologizing on the phone, because they hear the sound. They want to know where I am, and if I'm actually in my office doing my work for them, because they're wondering where on earth I am. That's kind of embarrassing. And that's after having spent $100,000 trying to insulate this building. Heaven forbid I have a client come into the office and this happens, and it happens. 35% of my business is with retired people. The topic of conversation is already anxiety-driven. You have this incredible noise that they can't distinguish, that is piercing to their ears, and they are nervous as can be. I'm walking my clients out, because I'm fearful that they're going to trip, fall, or heaven forbid, the sound comes when they're in the parking lot trying to get into their car. It's really quite disheartening to see what, how it affects other people, not just me. I am asking for this city to represent the people who live in this city, and who own businesses in this city, and who own property in the city, to protect us. There's an ordinance, and there's a reason for an ordinance. We have rights as well. My hours of operation, I'm on East Coast time and Pacific time. I'm an entrepreneur, I work seven days a week if I have to. My mornings start at 6:00 AM, and I meet clients at work, which means it can go to 7:00 and 7:30. Monday through Friday, and yes, I work on Saturdays, and sometimes on Sundays, too. I leave my office of comfort and have to go home for quiet and peace when that noise is so obnoxious. And I am most effective in my office with multiple scrims in all of my equipment and my staff. And my staff is anywhere from three to five people in the last 18 months, and we're all affected by it, and so are my clients.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions?
Sorry to be, it's just some of the same questions, so thank you for your patience, because, so you're 100% sure that the sound is the dyno meter?
There is no question.
Okay. And have you noticed any difference since Mr. Sparza installed a door? Have you noticed any change in the intensity, maybe? And-
So when the door is closed, it is muted a bit, but it still travels, you can still hear it on the phone, clients can hear it, they're still disturbed by it, and heaven forbid, they're outside in the parking lot, they're like frozen, not knowing where that's coming from-
Even with the door down?
-and they're like, they're coming off the street. Yeah.
Okay.
Even when the door is closed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Not to mention, it's very inconsistent, right? You can tell when it's open and not, right? But it's just very inconsistent.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a last speaker?
Our next speaker is Joe Vannelli.
You've heard my wife speak just a few minutes ago. She's pretty well-covered at all. But essentially, when I have clients, I have to apologize for the noise. You know, I'm charging them a lot of money to record, and so it's kind of embarrassing for me. And this has been going on for years. And I don't know why this can't be resolved. I mean, this gentleman is in the wrong place. I mean, they talked about other businesses, we don't hear the other businesses. I go to Achy, Breaky, or the tire place constantly. I don't hear the dogs, I don't hear them, but this gentleman I hear constantly, so we're asking for some help here. Okay?
Thank you.
That's it.
Anybody have any questions? Thank you so much. All right, so now, okay, this is the time for the business owner to respond to or rebut anything presented this evening. Does the business owner wish to speak at this time?
And listening to everybody and making their 100% assessments, what we do have is two acoustical reports, where the, Mr. Wu was actually at the dino recording, and the recordings that he took were below the city code 9305. But again, as Mr. Sparza brought up, that a normal car, I could show you guys, I had been saving for a long time and about to retire, I have a Corvette. And I actually brought a little meter. When you dry-start that car, it's at 80 decibels. California law allows up to 95 decibels. And Mr. Sparza has made an enormous amount of effort. We have tried to work with the city, we have not had return calls. He's installed a $15,000 door, dollar door on a building that he rents. He's not going to be able to recoup that. He's been in business for 10 years. We've been here every time, trying to comply and work with everyone. Mr. Sparza, if we could get together with maybe the city and Mr. Marcus, like we had previously talked about, maybe we could work something out. I don't know how eager the people that just spoke are in working something out, but this is, this gentleman's livelihood. He is a business owner here in Agora Hills, he also lives here, too. So to distinguish that, their businesses should be favored when he is in a zone for automotive repair. And that's what this is. As you heard Danny from Danny's Automotive, he's been there for 38 years, and he hasn't had a problem with it. We tried to show you how, you know, with an impact gun, just the common tools that you use to work on a car have great noise. When they, everybody refers to the dino noise, the dino does not make noise. It is a, an stationary device that keeps the car there. The noise comes from the exhaust. And to say every car is a pitching, high-pitching sound, that's absolutely not correct. Every car has a different sound. We could go start my Corvette out there, it has a unique sound. We could start somebody else's car, I don't know if anybody else has any cars that are performance cars or anything, but everything's different. The dino, the dino use with a vehicle exhaust on it lasts no more than 20 seconds. So if a Porsche comes rushing down either Agora Road, or comes down Dorothy from the Porsche shop, which you heard from the gentleman earlier, that they race up and down the street, they're above 65, because the vehicle just idling is at almost 70 decibels. So that's why Mr. Sparza brought into the fact that vehicle code section under California state law states that a vehicle can be up to 95 decibels. And we have been working, trying to get some sort of a resolution, so that we don't jeopardize this man's livelihood when he's been here for 10 years. Can't help that vehicles are regulated by the state and the federal government, and there's standards that they have set. And like, we showed you, 27151 is the standard. It shouldn't be over 95 decibels. In none of the readings that were provided from the Venon Clauseon report, which we've already shown that they were not, the readings from New Era Performance, went up to 78, 79 decibels from some other noise there. Shown that Mr. Wu's report, the only time he was actually there that could verify that the dino was in use, because Mr. Sparza met with them and did the polls right there, and it was under the amount. That door has added a tremendous reduction in the noise. And again, it's not dino noise, it's automotive exhaust and engine noise. And we're just asking you to not take this gentleman's livelihood. He is a young entrepreneur that works constantly, he's actually one of the best tuners in his field. I actually travel and take my car from Arizona and drive it all the way back here, just to have him tune on the car for me.
Thank you.
So I would leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes. Certainly.
I just have one request, and, you know, we heard the dino at one of the earlier meetings, and your case would be a lot clearer if we could hear those recordings. So, you know, I understand that you haven't heard them and can't, and don't feel prepared, but in my opinion, hearing those recordings would help us understand your point of view if you would reconsider. Maybe back, maybe come on back, sorry. It's just, we can hear you, but the people watching can't hear you, and-
With not having proper notice and been giving that-
Why don't we listen to it, and you can say, yes, it sounds like that, or no, it doesn't sound like that?
Because I would like to have an expert if we were to do that, but we already agreed not.
All I'm asking is, is that what it sounds like?
Okay, but my question here is, it's noise that we're after, not dino noise. Does that make sense?
Okay, but I, I understand, I understand. But according to the complaints that we got from the city, I understand there's noise, and there's, there's traffic noise, all of that is steady. This is a peak, okay? And so maybe the peak is from a Porsche driving by, maybe the peak is this or that. I think it would help if we heard that, and you could say, yes, that's this noise it makes, yes, that's the noise I hear. By your refusal to let us listen to that, we can't make that clear decision.
The problem is that, the problem is that we're trying to supply evidence stating that we were under the limit.
I, I know.
And you have that evidence, and we have provided the evidence showing that my dino stays under that limit. It doesn't matter if it's dino noise-
Well, we don't have that evidence, because that's what we're, we're fighting about.
The evidence is, is in the, in the, in the report.
I understand. I'm saying that it would be easier for us, and you could have the chance to say yes. I mean, I remember it from the other meeting, that-
Correct. But what I'm trying to say is that-
That's what you want me to rely on.
Well, the problem is that what I'm trying to say is that people are accusing me of loud noise. It does come from my dino. Obviously, there's cars on my dino, and the noise does come from my dino. I am not denying that. What I'm trying to fight is the simple fact that I am being accused of making noise over 65 decibels-
I understand.
-which I provided evidence that when the door is closed, it is under.
I, I understand, and I'm saying it would help us make a decision, because like the others, this is a, it's a tough one, I don't know, and it would help me hear that noise again.
The problem is that-
Like we heard, I mean, if you don't want to do it-
No, and I under-
That's fine, I'm asking if you would reconsider it.
I understand. The only, my only problem with all of this is that, why is my dino noise being targeted? Not the dogs barking, not the Porsche racing?
Because that's what the complaint is.
But the complaint is that I'm over the limit, and I'm proving that I'm under the limit.
The complaint is that the dino is disturbing the peace and going over the limit. So the complaint is specifically about the dino, it's not about the, the dog. I, I don't want to have this argument with you, I hear what you're saying. What I'm asking you is, would you reconsider hearing those WAV files? Because I think it would help us understand what all of your neighbors are hearing. Just a yes or no. I mean, you would have the opportunity to say, that is a, that is a-
I'm sure, I'm sure that is the noise, I'm not doubting it, I know it is.
And I'm saying to you that this council is very fair, and if you said that that did not represent, we would hear your side, and if they said that's exactly what represent, we would hear their side. But it would help us if we heard it, and you would have an opportunity to say, yes, that's how it sounds, or no, that's out of context.
The problem is that I know that is the noise, and that's how it sounds, for the simple reason that-
I'm asking, I'm asking to hear it, so I'm asking you yes or no.
Would you consider listening to the ones that Mr. Wu was present for, where it was in a controlled situation, where he can verify that the door was down? Because just planning an instrument out-
How about both? Do we have those? What do we have, Mr. Marcus?
I don't know what he has.
We, you have a thumb drive containing all of the WAV files? There's hundreds? I have some exemplars that I included here, which don't need to be evidence of anything. We don't even have to, we can listen to them for contextual reasons, and we do not have to attribute them to any business. You can just hear the difference between a dynamometer and a car engine.
I would like to hear the dino. Not, turn the volume down, I don't even care, I just want to hear the sound again. We heard it before.
Well, they did, they heard it on the YouTube video.
That was from the initial beginning of the shop, which was probably, I can't even remember what it was.
So I'm, I'm just going to ask again, because it's getting late, and we have one more agenda item. Would you be willing to, to let us hear the WAV files?
The WAV files from the, when Mr. Wu was there are labeled, and there is an exact file that shows which one it is. I'll let you listen to the three when the door is closed, because that's how I operate my shop.
Do we have those?
It would take me a second to pull them up.
They were labeled.
To the extent that the council feels that the listening to WAV files is critical, I don't think there should be any impediment to the council doing so today, because Mr. Sparza has waived any concerns he has with respect to time and notice. Alternatively, to the extent that this is likely going to be adjourned for determination, perhaps we could adjourn and continue the hearing and return in two weeks, and between now and then, they can listen to whatever they want to listen to?
No.
Alternatively, I don't think that they need to be evidence of anything with respect to New Era. You can just hear them for context.
That's what I'm asking.
And, and if they want to object, you guys can rule on the objection.
Well, and I think what Mr. Marcus means by that is, if it's not evidence, you're not going to rely on that. If, if you decide to revoke, your resolution is not going to point to this recording.
Correct.
You can't rely on it, you can't say, oh, that sounded horrible. You, you cannot rely on that for purposes of your decision.
I just want to make sure that we rely on the evidence that I provided of the noise?
It would help in context, because obviously, we can't measure the sound of a recording. I just, it just would help context.
Could I intervene for a moment? How do further counsel, do you feel you need to hear this recording to make a decision tonight? I really would like to get a decision tonight. I really would like to get a decision tonight. Counsel member Wolf, do you feel you need to hear it? Microphones, please.
I'm indifferent to whether we hear it or not. It's not going to sway me.
I think I, I would like to hear, have all the evidence and-
Well, we can't use it as evidence.
Then I, then I'm also, I agree with counsel member Anstead then.
Counsel member, okay.
I agree with counsel member Wolf and counsel member Anstead. I certainly understand counsel member Klein Lopez's interest in hearing it and it would be context. But if we're not allowed to use it as evidence, then it doesn't- I, if we were allowed to hear it as evidence, then I would be interested in it. But if it's not going to be evidence, then I don't see it being persuasive.
So, the only, if you want to admit it as evidence, then, and they're arguing this is a notice issue, then the way to solve that, whether you like it or not, I'm just giving the option, is you would continue it, they would be provided the files, they can listen to it, they can hire whomever they want to hire to rebut or whatever, and it would be admitted and everyone would listen to it. And then you'd have an opportunity to say this, why you agree or disagree based on your experts or your opinion.
Honestly, I just want to get to an end of this. So, we will continue by not admitting it as evidence and we will just go based off of that and it is what it is. And I just wish the best. That's it.
So, we'll proceed without hearing it. Thank you.
Sorry, to, to be clear, my question for them was to let us hear it as evidence.
Thank you, and that has been declined.
And they are declining that. Is that right? Okay.
Okay. So, now I go to, before I close. All right, thank you. Before I close the public hearing, do any council members have questions of staff or the business owner or anyone else?
Do I, does the staff make, get, have an opportunity to make closing remarks as well?
Well, that was technically a rebuttal. So, we had presentation. I mean, it's up to the counsel if you'd like them to have a closing.
Would you like a closing statement from the, okay?
Though, I do have questions. So, should we wait until?
For who? Who are your questions for?
Well, for the prosecution.
All right, so that, oh, so, yeah, they're defending. So, the prosecutor, let's let him make his closing statement and then you can ask. Thank you.
Thank you. Briefly, I want to address this notion of the city's law conflicting with state law. City's laws have nothing to do with vehicles and the laws have nothing to do with each other. State law says that a car can't exceed ninety-five decibels. City's law doesn't, the city doesn't have any restriction as far as I know on how loud a car can be. What the city's law says is that activities conducted by a business cannot exceed sixty-five decibels. One has nothing to do with the other. If your business activity involves operating a vehicle and that vehicle exceeds sixty-five decibels, well, then you have an obligation to use mitigation to ensure that the noise generated by that vehicle does not exceed sixty-five decibels beyond the, beyond your business, right? The laws have nothing to do with each other at all. And law is what we really have to talk about here. Because the city's law says that you can't exceed sixty-five decibels in your, in your, in your business operations. We have expert testimony with, with significant foundation laid for the conclusions that this dynamometer operation exceeded sixty-five decibels repeatedly. Whether the doors are open or shut, doesn't matter. It exceeded sixty-five decibels. That is a violation of the code and that is a public nuisance. And when there is a public nuisance and the business owner is given an opportunity to cure and doesn't, it is prima facie evidence that that public nuisance is detrimental to the public health, safety and general welfare. Mr. Asparza has not rebutted that prima facie showing. And even if we didn't have the prima facie showing, we have testimony from community residents that this has impacted their health, their serenity. It's made them anxious. It's given them headaches. It makes them worry about their ability to continue to provide for themselves because they're at risk of losing clients due to the embarrassment suffered. Because every time they have a meeting, they can't conclude without the loud noise. So, notwithstanding this prima facie, you know, concept, we have direct evidence from community residents that this is having a severe and detrimental impact on their health, safety and welfare. And when you have a violation of the city's code that is resulting in a detriment to community residents and business member, uh, business owners' health, safety and general welfare, the counsel has discretion to revoke a business license. Under these circumstances, staff would ask counsel to adopt a resolution revoking New Era's business license. I would also note, I apologize for circling back, but I'd also note that much of Mr. Asparza's presentation has had to do with the Venon Clauseon report. I've said it before, but I'll say it again. The report has nothing to do with this. The expert employed with respect to that report is not the expert before you. The results of that report are not the results before you. And that report has nothing to do with the violations that we're talking about because this is an entirely new proceeding. I understand that we've been here several times, but everything that we've done in the past is wholly irrelevant to the issues before us. This is the first hearing on this request to revoke. This is the first hearing on these violations. And it is these violations and the testimony of my expert, Mr. Wu, who has stated with one hundred percent certainty that what he measured is the dyno and the dyno alone. That is the only thing that is relevant. I have nothing further.
Thank you. No, I don't believe so. We can't have any more rebuttals. I, I, I think we know your standing and I think we know your standing at this point. Um, I, I think we're not admitting anymore. Thank you very much. Before I close the public hearing, do any council members have questions of staff or the business owner or anyone else? This is the last call for questions. As the city attorney explained, we are not to ask any questions during the deliberations to ensure that any information we rely on as part of our decision is part of the official record.
Just two questions. One on the readings that were done. So, Mr. Asparza, I'm sorry. Mr. Asparza gave this letter to us and he has these readings from eight twenty-nine, twelve oh-two, twelve oh-three, twelve forty-nine. And he said that they were done with him and then that readings were then done without him. And I'm just curious, why did we do that?
The reason that we did that was because when we went to do the readings with Mr. Asparza, the vehicle that he used for the, for the readings in front of us was a bone stock Camaro, which is stark contrast from many of the vehicles that he works on. That vehicle that he tested in front of us did not have modified exhaust, did not have a modified engine. And it resulted, that coupled with the dynamometer resulted in what I believe was an artificially low reading because it wasn't representative of the vehicles utilized by his customer base. And so, we went back to make sure that we could get forthright representation of what occurs there without any outside influence with respect to what ends up on that machine.
Okay, terrific. Thank you. And then, this is just a question for the staff. Mr. Asparza and his customer have talked about many, many calls that they made and not getting a response. And I'm just curious about our perspective on that.
I'll start off and I'll let Eric chime in. Code enforcement cases require confidentiality. Generally speaking, notwithstanding, the complainant is held in confidence. The investigative techniques are held in confidence. All of it is held in confidence. What we were asked to do by the counsel was to take these readings with him when we're not behind a bush and when we had, everyone knew that we were going, that the readings were going to be taken. Mr. Asparza had an opportunity to dispute the readings that were taken by Acoustical Group Incorporated. He was given an opportunity, if he did not agree with those readings, to hire a consultant of his own to get competing readings. He did not reach out to us. The person who claims not to be his attorney reached out to us, who doesn't have agency in this action. He did not sign an agency form. We've received no documentation from Mr. Asparza indicating that he has permission to speak on Mr. Asparza's behalf. And in code enforcement issues, we need to know that whoever is making arrangements, whoever is making promises, has the authority to do so. Mr. Asparza did not call us. It was Mr. Stewart who called our offices. And Mr. Stewart, there's no documentation anywhere in our files that would indicate that Mr. Stewart is his agent. We've only seen him here. And every time we've seen him here, he says, I'm not his, I'm not his, his attorney. I'm just here as a customer. And we don't negotiate with customers on code enforcement complaints because they have a legal obligation which ties to the property. So, that's why we never replied to him. And Eric had spent many, many instances communicating with them. And so, our code enforcement officer referred it to the prosecutor as is, as is, as she should have. And it was up to the prosecutor to determine what type of engagement was going to occur.
Terrific. Thank you. Ready?
Okay, I have two questions. One is for Mr. Wu. I'm wondering if you can respond to Mr. Asparza's assertion and, and what looks to appear factual about the NM one location, which was closer to his business, being lower than MN two, which was farther away. How does that make sense?
I can't respond to that particular noise event, given the information that's been presented here today. And it could be reflection. There's a lot of things that could be happening, happening out there. But I would tell you to look at event numbers one, two and three. And the other events clearly show that for event number one, they're above sixty-five dB A. And event number three, they're above sixty-five dB A. And this is at location number NM, at location number NM one, you can clearly see when the door was closed on the first three events, the sound level was below sixty-five dB A. And then for the majority of the other noise events that we identified in the table, they were above sixty-five dB A.
So, that still doesn't make sense to me. If the door, if, if the door was down?
Yeah, there were instances when the door was down for event number one, two and three, that the sound level was below sixty-five dB A. And there were many other events where the sound level was above sixty-five dB A, whether the door was open or closed.
Right, but on NM two, it says door closed.
Yeah, on that specific-
So, how is door closed higher, farther?
I can't tell you that at this moment. I would have to go back and re-review the wave files and the sources contributing to that specific event. But I can tell you that-
What do you, what, what, what are some possibilities without committing? Like, why, why?
Earlier today, we had people talking about differences in elevation, potential reflection, wind causing the sound to bend. We're not one hundred percent sure.
It would have been helpful to have that explained. My second question is for staff. And I'm not, I'm not, just for those of you who own buildings nearby, I'm not saying this is where I'm leaning, yes or no. I'm just curious. Can we even condition a business to only do certain activities three to four times a week or three to four hours a day? Is that even a possibility? Or is that not conditionable?
Yes, actually, the code includes a provision, sixty-eight twenty-five. Any business license can be conditioned. You can impose whatever conditions you'd like.
Okay. Uh, okay, those are my questions. Thank you.
I'll ask a similar question. You said that we have the discretion, um, if we find that they violated the statute to revoke the license. So, that means we also have the discretion to put something less than revoking the license. Is that correct?
The code reference, the code uses the word may, not shall. Uh, so you would have the discretion to revoke, modify, condition. You basically have the full gamut of options at your disposal.
Okay, and in order to do that, we would have to find first that they violated the statute in order to put those conditions on the business? Or would we not have to make that finding? I guess that's for the city. I don't know if that's for the city attorney or for the prosecution. Okay.
Uh, in order to place conditions on a license, you don't have to make any findings with respect to whether or not a law has been violated. You can condition it based upon the testimony of the community residents who say it bothers them. With that said, I think the violation here is pretty clear cut. So, but I hope that answers your question.
That, that answers my question. I think that's the only questions I have.
Could, uh, we talk, could the staff talk through what both alternatives would look like with the timeline? If the business license was revoked, what that would look like? And then if it was not, what, what that looks like? Uh, and by, what would it look like if the business license revoked? What's the timing for the business? Does it, is it effective immediately?
It would be effective at the, after the vote. So, if the vote, if the council voted, I'm sorry, Candace.
So, let me, I'll just refine that. What would happen, it's final when the resolution is adopted. So, what's common, what commonly happens in revocation hearings is you deliberate, you close the public hearing, you deliberate, you discuss, you do make a decision. And then you direct staff, please adopt the resolution revoking it. Or we are deciding that we're not revoking it. In this instance, staff did happen to prepare a resolution revoking it with their recommended findings. But you had a whole lot of evidence this evening and testimony. And really, the counsel should come to its own conclusion what those findings should be. And so, I would recommend that you can take a look at the resolution and say, hey, here's the other reasons why we think we need to revoke or we don't want to revoke. You don't have to adopt a resolution if you're not going to revoke. You only need to adopt the resolution if you're going to revoke. So, what would happen is you'd give us direction, hey, these are the findings we want in a resolution or a revocation if that is what the counsel decides. And then you would direct us to bring that resolution at the next council meeting. It would go on consent calendar because it, all it really does is memorialize counsel's decision made tonight. But technically, from a procedural standpoint, it's not final until the resolution's adopted. That said, we never reopen it. It's on consent. The public hearing is closed. So, we're not going to reopen it and discuss it and change our minds.
Right.
But that's what the procedure would be.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
That's all I got.
Any further questions? I have no further questions of staff. Thank you. There being no further questions, I will now close the public hearing. It appears that a majority of, oh, deliberations, right. We will now move to deliberations. I will start with, would you like to start, counsel member, Anderson?
I am happy to start, although I will defer a decision until I have heard from other city council members because I'm really interested in the possibility of a compromise. I would really like to keep you in business here in Agora Hills. And I really want to respect where you are coming from in the disturbances to your business. What comes up for me as I sit here is we've got two super incompatible businesses right next to each other. A recording studio and like a performance shop. So, it's real tough. But the tough part for you is you're violating the law by being so loud. And so, we don't have to revoke your license because you're violating the law. We've got some discretion in that, but you're violating the law. So, I mean, here, I can share with you where I've come so far, and I'm super interested, as I said, in the deliberations and thoughts of my fellow council members. Mr. Wu, you presented a terrific report. I am confident in your skills. Even Mr. Esparza's customer stipulated to your credentials and your qualifications. You explained what you were doing and the measurements. I'm not worried about you not being there because it's not your ears that is measuring. It's the machine that is actually doing all of the recordings. So the fact that you were coming and going doesn't trouble me at all. The fact that you then went back and did this thing and listening to it, and so you know that it was the dyno, or not. And what I'm understanding is it's not your machine. It's not the dyno machine. It's the combination of noise produced from the dyno and the car together. But when you got those, like, I bet your customer's car is not the down thing that, in any event. My hunch is, my understanding is, that you have a lot of really super cool cars that are coming. And it's those cars that then can get loud. And when you were having the exchange with Councilmember Klein Lopez about whether to hear the noise, like whether to hear the recording, one of the things you said is, "I know that's the noise." So you know that's the noise. It's not the Porsche, it's not the freeway, it's the noise. And the recording, and going back to Mr. Wu, it persuaded me that you were so thorough. You didn't just rely on the computer, that when you, when the wave showed you it could have been the dyno, you went and you listened to it. And based on you saying, you know, "It's the noise," and these neighbors of yours saying it's really distinct, I trust that that's the noise and that that's a violation. So we do have a violation on our hands. I am not at all persuaded by your state law. There is such a thing as, thank you, as preemption, but that's when two laws are conflicting with each other. And this law is, here's my reasoning around this, and honestly, it's what the prosecutor said. A car driving on a freeway can't be any louder than 95 whatevers. We in the city of Agora Hills can say none of our businesses can be above 65. Those are different situations. So we in Agora Hills can't say that cars, well, I'm not even going to go there. I don't see a conflict between those things. I get that you're an entrepreneur, and $15,000, my hunch is, is probably a lot of money for you. And so it's really hard to mitigate, so my heart goes out to you. I heard you say, you're not worth, like, you've spent the money. You're not going to do anymore. So I'm in a place where I really don't want to revoke your business license. I'm in a place where I really do hope that we can find a compromise. And that's why I'm looking forward to hearing from my other fellow council members about creative solutions that might be able to satisfy everybody.
Thank you. I'll go to the other end.
Sure. Actually, I think I'm in the same spot that Councilmember Anderson's in. So I think I'm, my feeling is that I think that there was enough proof that there was some violations of our act. I feel like that, I know you've tried to minimize it, and you've done a pretty good job of minimizing it, but I still think that you're operating with the door open. And so that extra payment for that door sometimes doesn't have any effect. So I think that it is disruptive to the other people that are in the area. But I think, in addition to what City Councilwoman Anderson said, and I think that we, I'm willing to try to find some other compromise besides revoking the license. So I'm willing to discuss it. So I think that's where I am right now.
Thank you. Councilmember Klein Lopez?
Thank you, and thank you for not picking on me first. This is such a tough one, and I have gone, I've flip-flopped on my, what I thought my decision was, you know, for the last three hours or so. So I don't even know where to begin. The first thing is that I have confidence in Mr. Wu's report. I'm not comfortable with the fact that it says doors likely open and doors likely closed. I really wish you all would have come back to us with a little bit more definitive observation. But I think combined with the, you know, witness, not witness, the public comment, testimony, and really the length, the many, many years of letters that have come through, it gives me some confidence that your report is correct, even if it's on paper not as solid as I wish I would have liked it with dyno doors open, not likely. So that aside, I will say that I think backed by the many, many years of complaints, I believe your report is accurately reflecting the situation. I definitely don't want to put a small business owner out of business, but that also goes to the other side of the room, who are also small business owners whose businesses are at risk. And I wouldn't want to live on eggshells like that. Just as an example, I sleep with a fan, right? I sleep with a fan every night for my whole life because the dog barking, that sudden interruption, that sudden change in sound. So I know there's ambient noise on the freeway. I know there are cars that go back and forth. But it's this shocking noise that comes in that's kind of weaken them up, like the dog barking wakes me up. So I understand what they need in terms of that anxiety of walking on eggshells waiting for the next dyno to drop, if you will. And especially if you're dealing with retired people who are clients and things like that. It's a fragile population that, you know, you really need to be thinking about. And it is why we have, it is why we have ordinances at my house, at their businesses. So I believe in the report. I believe in their right to ask us to enforce the noise ordinance. But I also don't want to put you out of business. And I understand that you work seven days a week, and I feel that. If we were to condition, I mean, I wouldn't condition very much. I don't know how much of your business relies on the dyno piece, if you're only doing three or four a day. Three or four a day. I mean, if we were to condition, no, 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 sorry, 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 sorry. But we can't have a back and forth right now. My point is, is if we, if we were to condition it, you wouldn't be happy because you wouldn't be able to get the amount of business. And you wouldn't be happy because their businesses aren't nine to five, where they can just say, you know, "Hey, REO Speedwagon," or whatever. You know, "You need to come in on Monday, not Tuesday." I know that's how your business, it doesn't work like that. But that's what a compromise would be. So if we were to condition it, I would want to condition it to very, very short, maybe two days max, and that's what the compromise is. But I don't even know if that works for anybody. If there's no compromise, I would unfortunately have to rule to revoke the business license. But very anxious to see what we might come up with.
Thank you. Councilmember Wolf?
Yes, so it's been pretty well articulated. I, the last thing I want to do is pull a small business license. What you're doing is unique, and it's a, it's a unique small business. And I appreciate that's in, you know, that's the lifeblood of Agora Hills. However, your business can't be the detriment of other people's small business. And so I think we do need to find some sort of compromise because we can't say that what you're doing has precedent over other people's livelihood, and we have the backing of the 65 decibel of the city, the city's law. So I am struggling. This has been a really difficult conversation for the last 10 months. And I would like to see some compromise because I do not want to put a small business out. But it can't be at the expense of other people's livelihoods and other people's well-being. So I'm having trouble coming to a conclusion. And I'm very unfortunately kind of leaning towards Councilmember Klein Lopez. We need to find some sort of narrow condition because one business's can't outweigh a lot of other people's livelihoods. And so it's really complex, and this has been difficult. But I'd also like to hear from the mayor. But to close, I echo Councilmember Klein Lopez's, if we can't come to a condition, I would have to be on the revoking, which I really, really do not want to do.
Thank you, everybody. If you could turn your mics off? Thank you. The city of Agora Hills wants businesses here. We encourage businesses to come here, and we want to give business licenses. But saying all that, we do have policies in place, one of which is our decibel reading. A business cannot exceed 65 decibels. And anybody coming into this city should know that before they move into the city. So if you're running a business that you know is going to exceed those numbers, then I don't understand why you chose to come here, knowing that. So for me, it's very black and white. The code has been violated. This has been going on for many years. Everybody has tried to mitigate it. The business owners have retrofitted their buildings with soundproofing. That hasn't worked. It's not enough. You have tried to install doors to, you know, suppress the sound. Obviously, that hasn't worked either because the violations and the complaints continue. I think we, as council members, have to listen to both sides. But ultimately, we have to say, the code was violated. Businesses are being damaged. It's detrimental to their health. And I know, you know, having worked in the film business myself, you don't have nine to five hours. You could be, you know, they've got a deadline on the stage. They need something right now. You can't say, "Well, sorry, I can't get it to you this time." You'll lose the contract. You know? And you can't say to your clients, "No, you can't come in at this point because I'm not allowed to do it now." I mean, that's not good for your business either. So I don't see how you're going to come to a compromise when the code is being violated. So I'm sorry, but that's my opinion. So I'm, you know, I'll wait to hear what you all have to finally say. Would you like to finish your deliberations, round two?
Mayor Sylvester, I certainly understand where you're coming from and respect that. And do feel that there is, as the prosecutor said, there are two, we need to make two things. It is, you have to decide that it's a violation, and you have to decide that it is in the public interest to revoke the license. So it's on that second one where I think there is some wiggle room that may allow. And, you know, I said, as I was first speaking, I said, "A compromise that would make everybody happy." And I'm really, there's not a compromise that would make everybody happy. You guys want the business going, you want to be able to operate. So that's the only thing that's going to keep everybody happy. But is there, is there a middle ground that allows you to stay in business and allows you to, while not having everything that you want still? One of the things I heard is some predictability when you were standing up, that just even the anticipation of it was difficult for you, as it would be for me. And so I will create an openness for Councilmember Klein Lopez's. And maybe it's not a compromise that would do anything, but two days, and one of those days being Saturday, and another day being a day that you guys all agree on that he can do it. And so it's still an impediment to your business on those days. But, so that's what I am open to of my other council members. Would like to consider that.
Who would like to go next? Could you turn your mic on, please?
I think, I'm still, I mean, I kind of am open to that, to two days a week compromise. I think, I mean, that sounds, that sounds like, I guess, probably the most that we could expect that other people would kind of put up with the noise. So I'm still open to it, but I also, I like the mayor's, I think that your argument is sound. I think you're, we're trying to make a compromise where maybe neither party's going to be happy, and whether his business could even stay in business if we restricted him to only doing it two days a week. And then are we going to be back in here again trying to enforce that if he violates it? Is another question, too, I think. So I'll throw that out there, and I'll let it go maybe one more round before I make, give my final opinion. I'd like to hear from the other council members again.
Okay.
May I make an additional condition? Because Councilmember Anstead, you speculated that perhaps the door was open more often. And it does, and I agree with Councilmember Klein Lopez, that I really wish we knew what the sound readings were. But Mr. Wu, the ones where you speculate that the doors are closed, it is much more reasonable. So an additional condition that I would want to put is door down always, if that door's ever cut open. And I hear you guys, it didn't sound like it mattered much, although we did have other testimony suggesting that that door down with that additional insulation mitigated it.
Please.
I mean, the only way I would agree to two days a week is no more than two days, and you'd both have to agree. You are okay with operating only two days a week? You can survive? Okay.
We need to reopen the public hearing if we're going to engage with anyone else.
Yeah, so you can reopen to ask him. That is also opens it up to having conversations with the neighbors.
Yes.
So that's just the caution. All right. I don't know if they want five minutes to chat amongst each other. I don't know if we want them to address the council. You have a couple of options.
Can I just deliberate before we do anything? Door closed, door open, I think it's irrelevant. I think you're beating dead horses here to try and find a compromise. I don't think there is a compromise. Do you break the 65 decibel? Yes or no? And I think it's as simple as that. If it breaks it, it's violating the law. This has been going on for years. I don't think it's fair to either side to drag it out any further. You just have to say, is it breaking our codes? Are our businesses, is it a public nuisance? Yes or no, as it stands now? I don't think compromising is what we should be discussing. We should just be discussing, has it violated the law? And if the answer is yes, in your opinion, then that should be your ruling. But I will let Councilmember Wolf deliberate next.
I'm not sure where we are now that we were given two things. But I appreciate, you know, the mayor makes a valid point. And so what are you asking me right now on if I would vote yes or no? Or am I open to...
I can't ask you to vote anyway because that's your decision. But what I'm saying is, as we're deliberating, I don't think it makes a difference if the door is open or closed. I don't think it makes a difference if the business is running one day a week or seven days a week. It is still a public nuisance when it's operating. So if you're, I don't understand how you can allow a business to operate when it's creating a public nuisance. That's my argument.
Right.
So I don't think, I don't know why we should be compromising. We should just be saying, you know, is it a public nuisance? Yes or no? Yes or no?
Right.
And, and I think that's what we should, that's why we revoke a license, because it creates a public nuisance and it's breaking the code.
And I, I mean, I'm, I'm not arguing that with you. I, I think it is creating a public nuisance.
Okay. Anybody else like to do another round?
Well, I think the only, the only thing I guess I would, I agree, I think we're all in agreement that they're violating the statute. It seems like that we're all on that. The, but both the prosecutor and I think the city attorneys also said that we have the, even if they're violating the statute, that we have the discretion to either cancel their business license or we can implement something else. And so I think that's where we are all, we're, we're at now is basically, are we going to just revoke the license or are we going to implement a compromise? And I, and I think that's, because I, I, I mean, I think that's the thing we're all in agreement with as far as I can tell is that we're definitely, we all agree that he's violating the.
Right. And I understand that everybody wants to keep him in business.
Right.
But how can you do that when the machinery that he uses and the car, and it varies. One day there'll be a, maybe quieter car and the next day it'll be some super duper car. So you can't, we can't control that and neither can he because that's his business. And that's how he has to conduct his business.
I think part of the argument was, uh, the fact that the, going back to the, the fact that they couldn't tell, again, if we put it two days a week or something like that, that they couldn't conduct their business the majority of the time because they didn't know when it was going to all of a sudden accelerate and they were going to hear the noise.
And, and they can't regulate their business either to, to, to certain days of the week. They have to respond to a client when the demand comes in.
I got you.
Otherwise they, they're not running a professional business. No, because that's the way the business works. They haven't broken any code violations.
Right.
They have tried to put in insulation to cut down on the noise level. So I think they've gone as far as they can go to in trying to mitigate the noise levels and they haven't been able to. So why are we punishing them and subjecting them to certain days of the week where they have to put up with it, even though we know it's a code violation? I don't think that's correct.
Good argument. So I, I agree, it's a good argument. So I mean, I, I'm, I think I'm open to, to revoking the license. I guess after your, I listened to your argument and I, I get what you're saying, that you're kind of trying to appease one side that is violating at the detriment to the local businesses that are around, around it. And, um, so I'm, I'm open to, I guess, revocation. I think it's still, I feel like it was the last resort, but I think that you're right. We have been, cause we've been kind of going over this for like the last nine months and, uh, and we haven't been able to get to a resolution. So I, I guess I, 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 you've kind of persuaded me that that's a, an option that we probably have to use.
So fellow council members, do you feel you want to reopen the public hearing or are you prepared to make a ruling?
No, I think I'm prepared. I think that, um, the reason we're, it's so hard and the reason we're trying so hard is because it just hurts. It hurts to put, um, to, to, you know, provoke a license and affect your business. And so, um, you know, I see heads shaking over there that it's not possible even down at two days because, and, and I would only argue that if it was agreeable to both parties or both, both sides. And I don't see that, um, happening. I also, you know, I'm not, I'm not going to sugarcoat it. I have a little distrust that you would even follow those rules because we asked you to put the door down all the time and the door wasn't down all the time. So my other fear is if we said, okay, you can do Monday and Saturday, you know, the first time if you did a different day and we got another call, we'd be here again. So, um, I guess if we do move to revoke the license, which I'm open to, we would just, consider a timeframe to give Mr. Esparza time to figure out where he might go. So not as immediate as it could be just by coming on consent, but giving him a little bit of time to figure out what to do next.
I would defer to legal for that. I don't know if there are certain procedures that have to be followed.
Very interesting question, one that's never been posed to me. Well, I guess, I suppose you could direct staff to pair, pair, if you are inclined to revoke, then decide that you're going to revoke, direct staff to pair a resolution with, um, kind of beefed up findings based on what we've heard in deliberation this evening. We can bring it back on consent and the council can determine the effective date of that resolution of revocation. So whether that's a month, two months, that, so that is, I think, an option.
May I ask another question? I understand, and this is not, um, and this, this actually did come out in the public hearing, that Mr. Esparza's business is not just Dino. Is there a world where his business license is modified such that Dino is not allowed, but he is still allowed to operate a business doing other non-noise creating activities?
I, what is the, I'm sorry, staff. It's kind of late. What is the business license, um, category for this?
If you give me a second, we'll put it up on the computer.
But I think.
Motor vehicle repair.
Yes. But I think Mr. Esparza has said that he uses the Dino every day. Am I, am I correct when you're, when you're working? Oh, I, I have to open a public hearing. We can't do that. So I don't know if he can run a business without using the, the equipment that he has and he's paid a lot of money for.
I don't know if he can either, um, but it's a possibility and I would certainly be open to opening the public hearing if that would be helpful to even know that.
What is the council's feeling on that? Do you want to? I mean.
I don't think it'll make a difference for me. I, I think because it's such a substantial part of his business, I think.
I, I agree. I think it is a very substantial part. Um, do you want to, to bring it back so that staff prepares it and we put it in consent calendar in a month to finalize? So he has a month?
You can either, um, bring it back in a month and it's effective immediately in a month. That would probably give us staff time to go through the record and revise it. Or if you, if you want closure, which I understand that want, desire for that, we can bring it back on consent at the next meeting, but the resolution would state this, the effective date is, this resolution is whatever, one month out, whatever date you guys decide. So those are your two options.
Right.
I would, I would say whatever is, is better for staff.
Can, can I give a thought on that?
Yes.
If, if, if that's the council's desire to bring it, bring it back to the next meeting. And the reason I say that is, you know, it's, it's like anything, when someone's leaving, we want it to be a good actor and I hope that, you know, the business owner will do that. But if, if there's time in between, there's a lot more opportunity for bad acting there and problems with the neighbors. So coming back and having agreement, what's going to happen during that time period would be helpful for us for enforcement purposes. And I hope that, you know, everybody plays nice together, but I can assure that, and the longer we keep that open, the, the more difficult that is.
So maybe not a good idea. So we should just do the revocation tonight?
A specific date tonight? Like, I mean, I, I feel like that you gotta give him time to be able to find another place to, to move his business to and to be able to, to move out. If he's not going to make any income in that building, you don't want him to be paying rent, uh, for it. So if we said like by the end of February that he had to, to, or that his license was revoked by the end of, of, uh, February, that gives him then time to find another place and then move his stuff out and move on to another, if that's what's going to occur. But I think that's kind of my feeling. That's, seems like a good, a decent amount of time, but not too much.
So the way that would be worded is that, you know, you'd have all the language saying revoking, and then basically the last section of the resolution would say, this resolution is effective, I guess, February 28th, 2025. But you have staff, Mr. Hamburger noting what happens if there are actions, unpalatable actions that happen between now and February 28th. It's not going to be effective till February 28th.
So.
So it's, it's just the council's discretion.
So, Mr. Hamburger, as our city manager, I'm going to lean on you for advice now because we haven't done this before. We've never had to revoke a license. Do you feel it should be effective immediately? Is that what you're saying?
Not necessarily. I, I think that at least bring, if, if the council makes the action to revoke the business license, that we bring back the resolution at the next meeting. And then we can set, so then, then, then if you want to have a time period, whatever that time period is, a month, thirty, whatever that is. But those, we also have agreement on what's going to happen during that time period. Because it's like any employee, right? If, if they know they're leaving, they're a lot more apt to, to not really show up, to maybe not follow the rules, not to, you know, do what's in the best interest of everybody around, um, for whatever reason. And I just don't want that scenario to blow up between multiple neighbors during that time if that's the condition. So we, we can lay out what's going to happen during that time period. We're very clear about that. And if there's violations, then we have a clear understanding of what's going to happen.
So we have to give direction to staff tonight to say that we'll bring it back on the consent agenda at our next meeting and then it will be effective at that, on that date of that meeting.
If, if that's what the council ultimately decides, yes, to revoke.
I also think it's not, it's, it's potentially, I think it's appropriate to ask Mr. Marcus as a city prosecutor, how he sees these things play out. I would just reopen the public hearing for the limited purposes of asking him that.
Okay. I'm reopening the public hearing, Mr. Marcus.
I apologize. Could you, could you, uh, phrase, pose the question one more time?
You want me to pose it?
Yes, please.
So my understanding is, the question is whether or not they, the revocation date is immediate at the next council meeting or whether we, if they build in some wiggle rooms to give him some time to figure out another plan, locate, whether that's thirty days, whether there are sixty days, whether that causes problems from a code enforcement perspective to push out the effective date of the revocation resolution.
It doesn't cause any, uh, I don't, doesn't raise any concerns for me from a code enforcement, code enforcement perspective. Uh, you know, I would expect that everyone will act, um, in a, you know, as professionals of going forward, regardless of what council does. And I mean, everyone with respect to the, the competing business owners. I would say though, that to the extent anything occurs, we still have the full panoply of enforcement mechan, uh, measures available to account for whatever may or may not occur. So no, it doesn't pose any issue to me, uh, to the extent you would, would, would want to make a resolution revoking it effective at a later date.
You can ask Denise. Um, could I ask Denise Thomas for her opinion?
Code enforcement complaints come in every day. And if the business license is already revoked and you're waiting in the period of time for them to vacate the premises, um, there's the possibility that misdemeanors could, could occur because every violation of our code is a misdemeanor offense. And it could be for the property owner and the business owner. And it would be unfortunate if in that 60 to 90 day period of time, we had additional code enforcement complaints that were generating criminal offenses. My recommendation actually is, I support what the city manager recommended. If, if we are going to revoke it, my recommendation would be to bring it back next month or at the next meeting or whichever meeting you all agree to. I would be perfectly willing to give some time. I'm not really sure if we can enter into some sort of a compliance agreement that laid out the steps as, as, um, the city manager has indicated so that we don't have an issue when we get to February 28th and the premises are still occupied. So those are my thoughts. I would prefer it to be, I would prefer it to happen, happen, if it's going to happen, happen now so that we can, we can begin to kind of help people along. But if you choose to give 60 days, I would ask for some sort of a compliance agreement or something in your resolution that gives us teeth so that we can, we would have a place to go.
Thank you. Well, that sounds like we're creating more problems by extending.
Yeah. Well, I will say this, you could adopt the resolution at the next meeting, have it be effective immediately. And then whatever happens that, after that, the city has prosecutorial discretion. You know, if someone's acting badly, they can act more quickly. If they're not really causing trouble, you know, we basically are unofficially giving them a grace period. So I think from what staff is recommending to adopt a resolution that has the revocation effective immediately, gives them the widest range of, range of options in case problems do arise.
Okay. So we should say, bring it back at the February 12th meeting on the consent calendar. So it will be effective immediately on February 12th.
Yes, I would only ask, is that an issue? I know we have a volunteer event coming up. It's on consent, so I don't imagine it should be a problem, but it's fine. Okay, yeah.
Yes. So, okay. So my, do I now read? If the council supports revocation? Yes, that's. So it appears that a majority of the council supports revocation. That being the case, I would like to recommend that the city council consider a motion supporting the revocation, directing the city attorney to review the record and revise the resolution to include findings from the records to support the revocation. This means we would not adopt the resolution revoking the business license tonight, but a, a revised resolution with additional filings will be brought back to the city council at the February 12th city council meeting. Okay. All right. I move, okay.
That's the potential.
Oh, that's a different one.
Yes.
Okay. I will now call for a motion and a second to approve my recommendation. Will the maker of the motion and the second state your names?
This is Mayor Pro Tim Wolf and I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Councilmember Anderson, a second.
Thank you. I will now defer to the city clerk for a roll call.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Anstead?
Aye.
Councilmember Klein Lopez?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Wolf?
Aye.
Mayor Sylvester?
Aye.
Mayor Sylvester, you have approval, five to zero.
Thank you. That concludes item number seven. Our next item is a discussion regarding the community wildlife risk assessment, the CWRA, and consideration of approval of the CWRA community service questions. I will now defer to Deputy City Manager Louis Selaya for the staff presentation.
Yes, good evening, Mayor Sylvester, members of the council. Um, this evening staff is, uh, going to present the community survey questions that are associated with the community wildfire risk assessment, which I will refer to now as the CWRA. As part of the work that is associated with developing the city's community wildfire risk assessment, the city's consultant, Jensen Hughes, has prepared an online community survey that will assist them in gathering information needed with its, with this endeavor. Jensen Hughes will utilize Survey Monkey to perform this task and this task is identified in the scope of work for Jensen Hughes as they developed a CWRA. As you are aware, this discussion item was continued from your January 8th meeting. The survey questions which are attached to the report will ultimately be posted on the city's dedicated CWR website page once the questions are finalized. This, this is a page where residents can learn about the CWRA process. The questions formulated by Jensen Hughes will assist them in understanding the community's concerns as it relates to the CWRA development. Team at Jensen Hughes has been working with the city's communication manager to develop outreach messages, materials that will be needed for the survey when it is ready for release. City staff and Jensen Hughes did meet with the law enforcement committee on December 6th, 2024 to present the draft survey questions. After some discussion regarding the survey length, some modifications were made along with some additional questions added from the subcommittee. Also at the December 6th meeting, representatives from the Agoura Hills Fire Safe Council were also in attendance and some suggested changes to the questions from the Agoura Fire Safe Council were completed by Jensen Hughes. This evening staff would like to receive comments from the council and finalize the questions so we. and finalize the questions, so we can move forward with releasing of the survey. As indicated in the staff report, once the survey is finalized, staff will begin to work with Jensen Hughes to begin the community outreach to encourage participation. Jensen Hughes would like this survey to run for a minimum of one month, and that is also the concurrence with staff. As noted in the staff report, in addition to this survey, there will be other broad communications stakeholder outreach efforts to other groups that Jensen Hughes will perform that will also take place. The results from this community survey will be shared at a future community meeting that is part of the scope of this CWRA development that will be scheduled. This concludes my report, and myself, along with Amelia Pluto from Jensen Hughes and members of the subcommittee are available for questions.
Thank you. Before we move on to public comment, does any council member have any questions of staff? No? All right. So I will now defer to the city clerk.
Thank you. The city did receive written correspondence that was forwarded to the city council from Jay Crutcher and Peter Feller, Agoura Hills, representing the Agoura Hills Fire Safe Council. And Peter Feller did submit two. And we do have two speakers this evening, Peter Feller, followed by Jay Crutcher. So if you could, please come up.
Thank you. Welcome. You'll have three minutes to speak, ending when the red light appears on the podium. You may begin when you're ready.
Madam Mayor, city council members and staff, my name is Peter Feller, and I'm president of the nonprofit Agoura Hills Fire Safe Council. First, I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge and mourn the catastrophic losses that our neighbors in Pacific Palisades, Altadena, and elsewhere in Los Angeles County have suffered in the recent wildfires. Twenty thousand structures lost, twenty-eight known dead, countless lives forever altered. The recent fires were ten times worse than the Woolsey fire that shook our community seven years ago. The Agoura Hills Fire Safe Council is solely focused on helping to protect life and property from wildfire. It's our singular mission. We've spoken to you before, and we'll be back again and again as needed. Tonight, we are discussing a survey that is a small but important part of the wildfire risk assessment by Jensen Hughes. On December sixteenth, we attended a subcommittee meeting where we were presented with a draft of the survey. In general, we were not happy with the survey. We found it to be boilerplate, with very little focus on our community's needs, resulting in insufficient benefit. The following day, on December seventeenth, we submitted detailed comments and suggestions, but as of now, have not seen those recommendations implemented. Our changes focus on the big-picture issues, and we urge you to make the survey and assessment process as productive as possible. The hundred and five thousand dollars investment in the WRA has significant public safety implications to life and property in Agoura Hills, and must be a well-constructed survey to minimize the effectiveness of our dollars, excuse me, to maximize the effectiveness of our dollars spent. We need to act with urgency. We're all in this together. It not only affects our wildlife mitigation efforts, but also our ability to obtain affordable property insurance. Council members and staff, we understand you have a lot on your plates. This is very important work. Please allow our team a fair opportunity to contribute to this process. We respect your experience and expertise, but in the area of wildfire mitigation, we add a lot of knowledge, experience, and resources. Make us your partner. Use us as a resource. We urge for the betterment of our community, that when you think wildfire, think Agoura Hills Fire Safe Council. We are here for you, and we want to do this together. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, esteemed city council members and city staff, first, I want to thank you and commend you for your overwhelming endurance, patience, and dedication. It's eleven o'clock. I acknowledge that, and I want to thank you. Second, and as a corollary to that, when I submitted my written comments, I had some links in there. There were about three thousand pages in those links, and it was in no way a request or even an implication that any of you would read all of that. I just wanted to document what I was saying, so that if you wanted to check anything, you would be able to. My name is Jay Crutcher. I've lived in Agoura since two thousand twelve. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight as you discuss this wildfire risk assessment survey. It's part of a process governed by federal law, the Healthy Forest Restoration Act of two thousand and three, that only requires the exception process, one, be collaborative, two, include prioritization of fuel treatments like brush clearance, and three, make recommendations to reduce structure fires. The Agoura Hills Fire Safe Council is asking to be considered as a collaborative stakeholder and partner in this process. We would like to help to improve the usefulness of the survey, if the project schedule allows. I'd like to highlight and explain some of the rationale behind some comments we provided on December seventeenth. There are thirty-six questions in the proposed survey before you today. Survey fatigue is a real thing. People get bored or don't have time, and many who start the survey will drop out partway through. When consultant Jensen Hughes did a similar surveys, sixty-one percent of respondents failed to complete the survey in Ojai. Sixty-four percent failed to complete the survey in Malibu. And that's after those communities were devastated by the Thomas and Woolsey fires. Rather than ask demographic questions first, such as age, or primary language, or the date of home construction, when that data already exists from the U.S. Census and was already reported on in last year's Las Virginas Malibu Council of Governments Hazard Mitigation Plan, we urge that the first questions prioritize our neighbors' experience and awareness of wildfire issues, and either remove the demographic questions or push them to the end. There are questions in the current survey asking if residents have large animals or household pets. We asked to also include questions about the ability to evacuate those animals, but those follow-ups were not added. We know that if people don't have the ability to evacuate their animals, the humans are less likely to evacuate themselves. And this inability would present a huge risk for the fire services and a huge need to develop proactive messaging and capacity. There's a question about defensible space. We asked for a follow-up about who does the landscaping. Is it you, your gardener, your HOA? Because that would guide messaging about how to implement defensible space. It's a different budget and project if you're speaking to thirty HOAs, or speaking to one hundred gardening companies, or eight thousand homeowners. Finally, we asked for a question about whether a resident lives in a fire hazard severity zone, but that question wasn't added. We suspect that most people have no idea, but I'd love to be able to prove that, not only to guide messaging in our community, but about how to measure and respond to risk throughout the county and state. Bottom line, we're asking for an opportunity to be collaborative partners in the survey and in the larger process, as we all look together to mitigate the existential threat of wildfire. Thank you.
Thank you both for being here tonight and speaking. Let's see, where am I now? Does any council, oh, no. Yes, do any council members have questions? Yes.
I do have one question. After hearing our speakers, is there a reason why the comments that were submitted by the Fire Safe Council on December seventeenth were not incorporated? Were they reviewed? Were they deemed not to be useful? What happened to those comments?
For clarification, we did review those questions with Jensen Hughes. Working with Jensen Hughes, those questions were presented to staff at Jensen Hughes, and there were modifications that were made. A couple were on formatting of questions. But there were some questions that were not, because Jensen Hughes believed that the overall purpose of the survey was to gather what was called preliminary information. As I noted in the staff report, there is going to be opportunity for other broader outreach to groups. I have been talking to Jensen Hughes, and we did talk in the beginning. We were talking that since the establishment of the Agoura Hills Fire Safe Council, we are going to carve out a special meeting for them, a virtual meeting, that they can bring all their members and the firewise communities that they develop to this. So this is just the beginning of a survey. The other broader outreach will allow Jensen Hughes to be a little more specific and to also hear those comments. This is just the beginning of the outreach effort. This is the first part. There is going to be other broader outreach efforts that are going to be done. But some of the questions were reviewed. Some were included, some changes were made, but others were deemed by Jensen Hughes as something that initially in this part of the community survey was something that they felt was going to be addressed later.
Okay. And remind me how widespread this survey is supposed to be, how many we're hoping to reach with this, and?
We are going to be utilizing Survey Monkey, and the survey will actually be something that people can fill out online. We are going to use outreach efforts via social media. We have developed a ad that we can put in the acorn, kind of directing people to the survey. But then again, there is also in the development of this process, we've identified the HOAs and other groups which are part of the broader stakeholders, that Jensen Hughes is going to individually contact those groups as well. And that includes the school district, all the HOAs, the Fire Safe Council, National Park Service, all those other agencies that are managing things, such as the, you know, the.
But this isn't targeted to our residents in terms of specific, like, so, for example, when we did our survey on the cannabis questions, it was specific, specifically targeted to residents in our city, like, by demographic, by, you know. It was not open to anybody.
It's going to be open to our residents and our businesses. We're going to, and there's a possibility, when we do put it in the paper, we may get other people from surrounding communities that may participate. Jensen Hughes is trying to gather as much community outreach, potentially outside of Agoura Hills, to see what the overall, because this is obviously, this type of development, a risk assessment for the Agoura Hills community, could potentially also, our neighbors could be impacted, the people that are in the unincorporated area. That's why it's not going to be a specific email that's going to go out to residents only. It's going to be a survey that we're going to post, and we're going to use our social media as well as ads to reach out to them.
Okay. I have a lot of comments, but those are my questions.
Okay. Can I just say something right now, because it's getting late? I don't think we should be taking a vote on this tonight. We are going back into the subcommittee tomorrow, correct? And I think, in lieu of what's just happened in the last two weeks, I think a lot of these questions are irrelevant now, and I think it would be an insult to our community to ask them. So I think we've really got to take a, if you'll let us go back to the subcommittee and really thrash this out, because I know you have a lot of input, and so do I. And I just don't think we need to be discussing this tonight. I think we need to continue it. I don't usually say continue, but tonight I am.
The survey, when we worked on it, it was done way before the fire. And we learned a lot during the fire, and so a lot of that should be incorporated in the survey. So I think it's good that we go back and try to reformat some of these questions.
Thank you.
And try to add all that.
Do I have any objections?
No, I just want to extend, as I'm sure my fellow council members do, a special thanks to Mr. Crutcher. Mr. Feller, it is also eleven fifteen for you, and you guys sat through an entire hearing that was completely irrelevant to why you were here. We appreciate your dedication.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I agree. I think you're right. But should we talk about any, like, of our comments, or should we just?
Will you give us a chance to create a new survey, and then bring that to you, and then, at that point, then you can, because I just feel we'll be wasting time tonight.
You don't want to stay here longer?
I don't want to stay here longer.
But just one quick thing to councilmember Lopez's points, there were some really good feedback in here that we should incorporate, so.
Absolutely. So if we're all in agreement?
Madam Mayor, can I just confirm with our city manager, I believe we do have an item about this in general, on tomorrow's subcommittee meeting? I just want to make sure that it's okay for us to be continuing this tomorrow?
Yeah, we anticipated bringing the, an update on the wildfire risk assessment timeline and whatnot, and just overall project, so we can include the survey with that presentation. And it's already been posted as required, so.
So we're good to talk about it tomorrow?
Yeah.
And we would, and we know you're aware of our subcommittee meetings, and would invite you to that meeting, and we can collaborate on shortening it and making it a little bit more relevant, to your point, Mayor.
Absolutely. Thank you. So we will move on. Are there any comments from staff?
No, I think it's an excellent idea. It'll give us an opportunity. Things have changed. It'll give us an opportunity, and I, you know, the hearing tonight, potentially moving the demographic questions to the back, or getting rid of them, is an excellent idea. And it'll give us an opportunity, again, to work with the subcommittee, and representative from Jensen Hughes hopefully will be there, because it's kind of new to them. We did tell them we were having this meeting, talking about the update, so. But yeah, I think it's a great idea.
Thank you. Yes. And it's not a reflection on you, but everything has changed.
None taken. None taken.
Because I was in that committee meeting too, so. All right. So any other comments from staff? I do have an announcement from one staff member who could no longer be here. Amy Brink asked me to remind everybody that, oh, she's here. Oh, sorry. Oh, well then, please make your statement.
Mayor Sylvester, I was giving you an opportunity to make the announcement. We just want to remind people, and actually maybe inform some people. You'll see a lot more. Good evening, council, or good morning, in forty-five minutes. We want to remind the community and even inform them about the Ladyface Mountain Film Festival. We're launching it this year, twenty twenty-five. It's taking place up at the Agoura Hills Recreation and Event Center, and at the Regency Theater in Agoura Hills. It's going to take place over the weekend of February six, seven, and eight. It begins on Thursday evening and goes through till Saturday. If you want to visit their website, ladyfacefilmfestival.org, dot com. We'll have the link on our website. You can check it out and buy tickets. There's a VIP, going to be a great VIP party that Sunrose and Whizzins is hosting. There's going to be a free community event on Saturday at the Recreation Center, where we're going to be debuting lots of local documentaries about the wildlife corridor. We're going to be showing the Ballard, the Ballard family documentary. So we have a lot of activities going on on Saturday, and that will be for free. So please check out the website. And if you have any questions, feel free to reach out to us up at the Agoura Hills Recreation and Event Center.
Thank you. And I'd just like to add, I've already bought two VIP passes for the weekend, for the entire festival. I encourage you all to do the same. It's really reasonable, and we're going to have a lot of fun. So are there any comments from city council?
Just thank you, Peter and Jay, for staying. Really appreciate it. And now, Madam Mayor, I want to commend you on running a good meeting, and, you know, your decisiveness. I think you did a really good job tonight.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I wasn't able to be here at the special meeting. I appreciate all of your grace. My life has been turned upside down professionally with everything that has been happening. So not having been able to be here at that special meeting, I just want to say, and one of my fellow council members, everything has changed. And so I am glad that we are going back and revisiting this. It has certainly elevated for me, this wildfire risk, and the need for us to get super creative in how we make sure that we are doing everything we can. I went down and visited the incident command post over the weekend in Malibu and was astounded. I mean, it was an entire city of first responders from around the country, but even an entire city of first responders from around the country couldn't save the Palisades and couldn't save everything that happened up in Eden. And so reading the stories afterwards about the homes that were saved and the homes that were not, just made clear to me that, at some level, there may be nothing that we can do but. And I think back to Woolsey, and that little finger, like, Woolsey burned all around us, but there was this little finger of Agoura Hills that wasn't burned, and we were lucky. And it just, it makes me even more grateful for the Firewise Council, and to say that I look forward to working with our city staff and the city council in doing even more. And this is especially relevant for me. My pumpkin is at Callard's and is spending the night with her and with their roommates here. Like, they came, they got here around just before our meeting. So it just really brings home for me that risk.
Thank you. And now, before we close, we both have something to share, but I'll let you go first.
We are both, the mayor and I, we're. We both, the mayor and I, would like to adjourn this meeting in memory of two beloved teachers. So I'm going to read mine first, and then the mayor will close us out. I'm very honored to request that we adjourn tonight's meeting in memory of Addis Pete Petersons. He was a, my government teacher at Agoura High School. And I'll just tell you this one quick story, because, you know, why not? You know, just be here a little longer, but I promise you it'll be worth your, it'll be worth, it'll be worth the time. I had Mr. Pete and his wife, Mrs. Pete, Agoura Hills residents, and she's an, she was an English teacher, and he was my government teacher, and I had him in the 12th grade. And the thing that I remember the most was, and this is in the 80s, okay? So there's no iPhone, there's no, nothing. And so we went to school, and we were in school in the morning, and the space shuttle, the Challenger, exploded. And Mr. Pete ran home to his house in Agoura Hills, taped the news on a VCR, and I'm, when I tell you, this was like breaking technology. And then he brought the VCR back to school, and we watched it in class, and it blew, I mean, this is mid-'80s that we were watching it in class, and it just blew my mind, and it had such a big impact on me. What's that? Did I say the wrong?
No.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Thanks, Jeremy, for reminding us that you weren't born yet. Anyway, it did have, it had a huge impact on me, and I think, as you know, you know, very involved in public service, and when I ran for office the first time, I knocked on their door, they're Lake Lindero residents, and I knocked on their door, and of course, they remembered me, and I told them how much of an influence he was on my life and government and public service, and I'm so glad that I got to tell him that. And he was at my swearing-in, and we stayed in touch for decades. I mean, we stayed in touch, his kids went to school with me also before Jeremy was born. And so he's just a real beloved person, but he also has an amazingly interesting background. So I'm going to read his obituary that his daughter wrote, and you'll understand what I'm saying. "With heavy hearts, we announced the passing of Addis Pete Petersons, a devoted husband, father, grandfather, and great-grandfather of Agoura Hills, California. Pete passed away peacefully on Sunday, November 17, 2024, at the age of 90, with his beloved daughters by his side. Born on June 15, 1934, in Latvia, Pete's early years were filled with the joys of running through the pastures and woods on his family's dairy farm. His idyllic childhood was tragically disrupted in 1940, when Soviet and Nazi invasions forced his family to leave their homeland. After five years in refugee camps, Pete and his family immigrated to America, beginning a journey of resilience and triumph. Pete's talent as a runner earned him a scholarship to USC, where he discovered his passion for education and athletics. After graduating from USC in 1960, he embarked on a storied career as an educator and trailblazing track coach. From his beginnings as an assistant coach at USC and Pierce College to coaching Olympic athletes for renowned organizations like the Southern California Striders, Club West, and Athletic West Track Clubs, along with a long career of coaching and managing the Adidas and Nike touring teams, Pete left an enduring mark on the world of track and field. His infectious enthusiasm and innovative coaching philosophy spawned a fresh approach to the sport, hence the birth of this theory and coaching style, Run for Fun, which emphasized the joy of the sport and inspired countless athletes who became like long friends. Pete proudly served in the U.S. Army for two years, during which he became a U.S. citizen, a milestone he cherished. In 1962, Pete met the love of his life, Joyce, while teaching at Hughes Junior High. They married in June 1964 and soon made their home in Agoura Hills, where they raised two daughters, Marnie and Cory. Both Pete and Joyce dedicated decades to teaching at Agoura High School, becoming beloved by students who affectionately called them Mr. and Mrs. Pete. Their influence extended far beyond the classroom, as they were known for inspiring everyone they met. Pete's coaching career took the family on remarkable adventures around the world. This included a year in Saudi Arabia, where he developed the nation's Olympic track and field program for the Montreal Olympics, as well as summer coaching stints in Venezuela, Grenada, and Jamaica. Summers also brought unforgettable travels across Europe, following track and field meet, following the track and field meet circuit. Outside of his careers, Pete found joy in the simple things, capturing life's beauty through photography, spending time with his family, and listening to classical music. His love for storytelling, sports, and his contagious positivity made him a treasured presence in the life of those around him. Pete and Joyce shared 63 years together in their Agoura Hills home, creating a legacy of love, laughter, and inspiration. He is preceded in death by his parents, Voldemort Zinvera, his siblings, Modrus and Jawsma, and his cherished childhood dog, Rex, a bittersweet memory he reflected on in his memoir, Run for Fun, which chronicles his journey as a refugee-turned-American success story. He's also survived by his loving wife, Joyce, his daughters, Marnie and Cory, his grandchildren, and a great-granddaughter, lovingly referred to as the Little One. Pete's infectious smile, boundless enthusiasm, and genuine love for people will live on in the hearts of all who knew him. The family extends their heartfelt gratitude to everyone who offered love and support during this time. Pete will be deeply missed but forever cherished." Thank you.
Thank you so much. Well, I also have a Mr. Pete that I would like to memorialize. And when I first heard that Debbie was honoring Mr. Pete, I thought, oh, that's wonderful! I didn't know she knew him! But it turns out that they're two different people. So my Mr. Pete was the Willow Plant Manager, and that's where my children were at elementary school, and he took such great pride in his campus, and we all adored him. He was originally from Liverpool, England, so of course, we had a connection. And I ran the Kids Face program at Willow in those days, which was to teach, believe it or not, we were teaching the kids about recycling. I said to Mr. Pete, you know, I, we need recycling bins on the campus, you know, at the weekends, all these sports teams come in, and they're just throwing all their cans into the trash. And he looked at me rather dubiously and said, "Well, if you think that it's going to work, we'll give it a try." So we set up these beautiful cardboard bins, Kids Face recycling, and on Monday morning, I'd go in, and I said, so, you know, I was all excited, "How many cans did we get?" He said, "Well, we, I've got several dirty diapers, I've got all this other trash in there." He said, "Maybe a couple of cans." But he was so great about it, because he never said no. He was always willing to give it a try. And then I would just like to read a couple of things that some of the teachers said about him. Mindy Dowd said, "He was a wonderful actor. I will never forget when the second-grade team performed 'The King with a Terrible Temper,' and our own Mr. Pete played a lovely damsel in distress, complete with a blonde wig, pink cape, and a jewel crown. He was a very special gift to all of us." He was also a big Beatles fan. As Judy Burke said, "Peter was such a great guy. When he sang yesterday at our Willow Talent Show, the audience went wild, and Sandy Pope followed up. We were all left swooning." So, Mr. Pete, he was a big Liverpool football club supporter, so it's only appropriate that I end with, "Mr. Pete, you'll never walk alone." Thank you. And on that note, the next regular city council meeting is scheduled for 6:00 p.m. on Wednesday, February 12, 2025, in the Council Chambers of the Civic Center, located at 30001 Ladyface Court, Agoura Hills, California. This meeting is now adjourned in memory of both Mr. Pete's, Addis Pete Petersons, and Peter John Thompson. Thank you. Good night, everyone.